July, excuse me, not July, the August, what is today's day? Fourteenth meeting of the Board of Zoning Appeals. My name is Jeff Carson. I'm serving as your chair this evening. Make a couple of introductions before we start. We have Karen Jones serving as vice chair. She is with us online. Gunnar Hand, the Director of Land Use and Urban Planning is with us along with Janet Parker, the Executive Assistant to the Department of Planning and Urban Design. We also have Jeff Conway with Unified Government Legal Counsel and the following Board of Zoning Appeals Commissioners are present tonight. Here in the chambers, we have Commissioner Aaron Ward, Commissioner James Beth, and Commissioner Rose Isles. Online, we have Commissioner Brandy Armstrong, Commissioner James Connolly, Commissioner James Ernst, Commissioner Mark Muller, Commissioner Joseph Straws, and we will have Commissioner Miller joining us in just a few minutes. So with that, I will now turn it over to Secretary Parker, who will read the opening statement.
We would like to welcome those participating by Zoom or in the commission chamber to the meeting of the Board of Zoning Appeals. Members of the Board of Zoning Appeals are participating remotely by Zoom or are present in the commission chamber, and Mr. Jeff Carson is serving as chairman this evening. Please note the following instructions for the meeting. If you are joining by Zoom video, please make sure you have an appropriate background. Board members that are participating by Zoom, please use the raise your hand feature when you want to speak, and after Chairman Carson recognizes you, please unmute your microphone and state your name when you begin to speak. If you're in the commission chamber, please state your name before speaking once the chairman recognizes you. For those members of the public attending the meeting virtually this evening, please use the raise your hand feature if you want to speak on an application. If you are present in the commission chamber, please come to the microphone at the front of the room when the application is called. After the chairman recognizes you, please state your name and address and make your comments. If you're having issues getting in the Zoom meeting, please email planninginfo@wikoKCK.org and let Secretary Parker know. Proper meeting decorum is expected of all participating in the meeting, and anyone who fails to act properly will be removed from the meeting. The city reserves the right to discontinue a meeting if any improper behavior occurs, which prevents the uninterrupted conduct of business. The format for this evening's meeting is as follows. The applicant will make the opening statement explaining the proposal. The applicant will be given 15 minutes to present their case, which includes the applicant, consultants, and other members of the applicant's team. Members of the board will then address any questions they may have to the applicant. Any persons wishing to speak in favor will be recognized and allowed to do so at that time. Then those persons in opposition will be recognized to make their statements and ask questions, with each member of the public being given five minutes to express their opinion. Time may not be shared between speakers. A speaker's time may be extended in five-minute intervals by a two-thirds majority vote of the board. The chairman will ask for a show of hands of people who are in support or opposition that did not speak. The applicant will then answer questions and make a closing statement. The public hearing portion of the meeting will be closed, and the public will only be allowed to address the board if a question is directed to them. The staff will make their recommendation. The board will discuss the application and make their decision, with a brief statement of the reason for the motion preceding the making of the motion. Motions to approve shall include the staff conditions unless otherwise stated in the motion. Mr. Chairman, our first application is BOZA 2023-016, Olga Reyes for property at 329 North 13th Street. Does any member of the board have any contact to disclose with regard to this application?
No.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Reyes, are you in the audience or are you on the audience online? I need you to raise your hand or come to the microphone. Olga Reyes. Jen, I'm not seeing anyone. Can we go ahead and move this to, oh, here we go. Hey, Ms. Reyes. I think I have you queued up to speak.
Yes.
Go ahead, please.
We are here on the meeting because we have to know what about the addition on the bedroom upstairs.
Okay, who is speaking to me right now? Give me your name and address, please.
Fernando Montiel is 329 North 13th Street.
Okay, and are you related to Ms. Reyes?
Yes. Is my wife.
Okay, and she's with you, correct?
Yes.
Okay, so tell us what you'd like to do here.
Oh, we want to know what happened because we do another bedroom upstairs, but the city stopped us. But we do all the process, we follow the steps, but now we have to know what happened. We can continue or what happened.
Okay, so you started to build an addition to your property, is that correct, on the second floor?
Yes.
And did you get permits from the city before you started that work?
No, that's why a problem.
Okay, were you aware that you needed permits to do that work?
I don't know, because when the city stopped us, we went to the planning and zoning and we give you the draws for the new construction, and we're not sure if we have a good answer or what happened.
Okay, but you did that after you were notified that you were in violation, correct? You did not get permission to build it before you did it, right?
No.
Okay, all right. Anything else you want to add?
No, we want to get the permits. I need to finish because on one side of my home is open, just like closed with a plastic.
How far along is the construction? Do you already have people living in the upstairs?
No, it's empty.
How far along is it?
Last year on September, or no, in October, no, September.
No, pero está preguntando de qué tanto has sido del...
Oh.
Allá arriba.
Oh, we almost finished.
You're almost finished?
Yes.
Okay, all right, well, let's see what we can do here. So anything else you want me to add before we go forward?
Quieres saber qué va a pasar? No, está preguntando si quieres agregar algo o que ya puede proceder con lo que van a hacer.
Oh.
Es lo único que van a...
No, no, we don't need it. I did another question because when the city stopped us, we almost finished to build. The reason is because when I removed the old roof, I moved the walls and I did six foot high from the old construction on two walls.
Okay, well, we'll get some more information from the staff about where you're at right now, but let's go ahead and we'll go to the public. Is there anybody in the audience that wants to speak to this case in favor or in opposition? Please raise your hand or come to the microphone. Okay, seeing no one, we'll go ahead and go to Director Hand and get his comments on this case.
Hey, Mr. Chairman, Director of Planning, excuse me, and Urban Design. This case is seeking two variances. The first one is for a side yard interior setback. The other one is for a projection into a setback. There is an allowance in the code to allow a certain length of projection, but the proposed construction goes deeper than that by about 12 inches. This is a central area plan, just north of Central Avenue on 13th Street. You can see, again, this is ug.maps. It's not perfect, but basically the house is essentially legal non-conforming in the sense that it's sitting right on its property line to the north. We went ahead and sought the request of a zero line setback because without actually ground trusing it with the survey out there, we don't know if it's on or near, but it's pretty close. And so while this doesn't change how deep the building goes into that side yard setback requirement, it does exacerbate it by essentially building a second story, which is more facade, looking into, if you will, that property to the north, which is one of the intents of the sidebar setback requirement, just to having that little, having that distance from adjacent properties. The main issue here, which you can see mostly from this picture, which isn't very good, but you can see in the aerial too, essentially the added roof line projects farther than the existing roof line, and that goes into the projections. That's probably more of the issue here than exacerbating an already existing floor plan that pretty much goes straight up. You can kind of see it right there. Staff received no letters of support, no letters of opposition. This case did come to us as a stop work order by building codes. As was noted by the applicant early in his comments, this project did not get a building permit to do this work. They received a stop work order. When it was handed over to, when it was reviewed by building inspection staff, they noticed that it would require a variance, which is why we're here in front of those before they can move forward. This is a self-imposed hardship. As per our protocol, staff recommends denial. But if the Board of Zoning Appeals does want to move forward with approval, we do have conditions of approval, including getting a retroactive building permit. I will admit, if you do recommend approval and we do go through a building, a retroactive building permit, I don't know what the building inspector is going to say about the construction. I.e., if you deny it, they have to remove it. If you approve it, they might have some issues, but maybe not. Again, we have to get through this process before building inspections will go out there and check it out.
All right, thank you. If this were to have come before us in the correct manner, would there have been a recommendation for approval?
Gunnar Hand, Director of Planning and Design, hypothetically, I think what would have happened is we probably would have worked with them to develop a design that did not require any variances. They are very close to not needing any variances.
All right, thank you. Other questions for Director Hand? Commissioner Isles?
I don't see any neighborhood meeting notes. Did they have a neighborhood meeting? And I mean, there's the affidavit that says they had one on June 10th, but I don't see a summary of the meeting. So, page 14.
Gunnar Hand, Director of Planning and Design, again, they have what's required, which is the affidavit. If we've missed the notes synopsis of what was included, I don't know. We could always ask the applicant what happened at the meeting.
Let me find out here. Hey, Mr. Reyes.
Yes.
Did you have a neighborhood meeting with your neighbors to tell them what you were doing to your house?
Yes, we did, and we sent like 50 letters to all my neighbors, but nobody coming on the date.
Okay, did anybody call you and ask you about your house or what you were doing?
No, because on the letters, we put in the phone number to call us, and we put in the date and hour, and we were here, but nobody coming.
Nobody came and nobody called, correct? Nobody called you either?
No.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Ernst?
I just wanted to get a clarification from Gunnar. Is the addition somewhat offset? You showed a picture where it's kind of hanging over. The pictures that I have with our material looks like it's short.
Yeah, let me.
So is it offset?
Let me show you. Gunnar Hand, Director of Planning and Design, yes, it is, and real quick, I'm going to reshare the screen to show you what I'm seeing. So this is just, again, this is just Google Street, so this isn't scientific. You can see this is actually taken when it was under construction, but this is the best look of it from a picture. Yes, it's heavier on the north side than it is on the south side.
Okay, that makes more sense.
See him working on it right there. Yes, it doesn't seem to be symmetrical.
Thank you.
Other questions for Director Hand? Commissioner Jones?
Director Hand, so when you said that, I think I heard you say that they were close, can you be more specific about they're close perhaps to not needing a variance? Is that what you're meaning? Did I hear that right?
Gunnar Hand, Director of Planning and Urban Design, yes, the projection into the side yard allows for 30 inches, and they're going in 42. So they're 12 inches farther than the roof line should be. And again, as I was explaining, the side yard setback, we believe it's right on, it is existing right on the side yard setback. So again, it's an exacerbation of not getting deeper into the setback, but having more facade, if you will, overlooking the setback. So in that sense, the intent of the code is not being met, which is why we went ahead with the variance as well. That first variance.
I have one more question, if I could. I recognize this, this is not the normal protocol where building inspection doesn't go out there until this process is done, but given the circumstances and that they could be in violation to the point that they still wouldn't be able to proceed. I mean, do we have any flexibility at all to make an exception to the protocol and have building inspection go out there? Because they may not be able to proceed anyway, is the reality, depending on what building inspection says.
Gunnar Hand, Director of Planning and Urban Design, not 100% sure how to answer that question. I would say that regardless of what happens tonight, they need to go through with the building inspector to make sure it meets the building code, which is not what this body is in charge of. So I think the question before us is, do we allow that deep of projection? If not, then they have to figure out how to change the roof line. Do we allow them to build a second story? Staff doesn't necessarily have an issue with that because it doesn't project farther into that side yard setback. It's just more facade facing that side yard setback. Both of those staff believes can and should be resolved now so that building inspection can get in there and look at what's going on with clear direction from us. One way or another, that would be staff's recommendation.
Okay.
Thank you.
I keep raising my hand for some reason, but this is Commissioner James Connolly. On page 14 of our staff notes, on the neighborhood affidavit, it's got Wyandotte County marked out and Johnson County on page 14.
Are you talking about the neighborhood meeting, Commissioner?
Yeah.
Okay, the notary, Commissioner Isles has a response to that as a notary public. Go ahead.
So I am a notary, and I'm a notary for the state of Kansas. And even though this project is in Wyandotte County, if the person who wanted this notarized came to me at my office and I was sitting in Johnson County, that's why it's crossed out, because they went somewhere in Johnson County to get this notarized. It doesn't matter that they didn't get it notarized in front of a white, somebody sitting in Wyandotte County.
Correct.
Does that make sense?
Commissioner Connolly, you good with that?
So all that up top is what the notary does.
That's for the notary, correct.
Okay, all right.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Straws?
Just a quick question for staff. I know they recommend denial, but normally when something like this comes and they're so close to not needing a variance, normally it's a conditions requirement met, like if they take the roof line back to match the original roof line on this particular property, which is 12 inches. I mean, I'm not quite for sure. I know they didn't get the permits, and I know this is not built already yet, but we recommended denial, but is there a way that they could? You don't have an issue with everything else except for the 12 inches, is what I'm hearing. So from a recommendation perspective, if they took the roof line back 12 inches, would you recommend approval and then send them to the building code?
Gunnar Hand, Director of Planning and Design, if you denied variance two, they would have to move it back 12 inches. So to grant them variance two, they would leave it, and to say, leave it, but then with the condition that they have to pull it back 10, 12 inches to no longer be in violation is sort of like a double step when you could just deny it and require them when they go bit to the, which would then require them when they go get the retroactive building permit to fix that issue. So if the issue is the 12 inches, staff's recommendation would be to deny that. If you want to leave the overhang and just deal with the fact that we don't know if that building, that addition is structurally sound and it needs a retroactive building permit, then you would want to approve both of these variances.
Can I answer your question, Commissioner Straws?
Yes.
All right, Commissioner Connolly?
Yeah, so if we deny, do they have to tear it down?
No, if we deny it, they have to remove 12 inches of that projection, but they still have to resolve their stop work order, which requires them to get a retroactive building permit.
Okay, all right, thanks.
Commissioner Beth?
And again, that, what happens at that retroactive building permit is a bit unknown, but it's certainly something we want to make sure that we review and make sure that building is safe. Sorry.
That's my clarification on this. No matter what we do, they're going to have to get a building, they're going to have to go to building inspectors and get a building permit.
That's correct.
Giving them a variance is not going to solve the overhang problem because they would actually need a building permit to go remove that. So it's not going to, it's not going to solve the stop work order.
That's correct. So the granting or denial of the variance does not remove the stop work order, which requires them to rectify this through a building permit.
Right.
The variances will just then direct the building inspector how to move forward with the applicant.
Yeah, and they can't do anything until we make a decision.
That's correct.
Thank you. Further questions for Director Hand? Seeing none, I will stand for a motion when ready. Commissioner Isles?
Commissioner Isles, I make a motion to approve based on staff stipulations.
Are you recommending approval of both variance one and variance two?
I am, variance one and variance two.
Okay, motion made for approval of variance one and two in accordance with all staff stipulations and comments. Is there a second? Commissioner Jones?
That's the second.
All right, second from Commissioner Jones. Discussion on the motion for approval. Commissioner Ernst?
I didn't have anything. The show of hands is a little flaky tonight, as Mr. Connolly noted.
Must be. Commissioner Connolly?
Yeah, I guess the question, I mean, I was looking at how close is the house is to its neighbors? And if that's oversized roof, it could cause some type of collapse. So I mean, I'm just thinking that they should have somebody come out there and look at it and have them to properly fit it. I mean, I'm looking at it on the roof, and I'm like, Commissioner Ernst, it ain't our way on the edge, but could it be top heavy in a sense and can fall over to the neighbor's house? That's my thought, so.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Straws?
My discussion is on the motion, actually. She's, her motion is to approve according to staff stipulations, but staff stipulations says that they are asking for denial, so I want clarification on the motion that we're about to vote on.
There are, there's a path forward, correct, Director Hand?
Yes.
The staff recommendation is for denial, but that doesn't mean that the clarifications in the file don't follow a denial path.
There are conditions of approval in the staff report if the Board of Zoning Appeals wants to move forward with approval.
Okay, got you.
This motion is for approval with those conditions.
Got you.
All right. Further questions or discussion? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Armstrong?
I.
Beth?
Hi.
Connolly?
No.
Isles?
I.
Ernst?
I.
Jones?
I.
Commissioner Miller, am I going to assume that you're going to abstain since you weren't here for the whole hearing?
Yes, that's why I was unmuted to do that.
Okay. Muller?
Hi.
Straws?
Hi.
Ward?
No.
Mr. Chairman, that motion to approve variances one and two with the conditions listed in the staff report passes seven in favor, two opposed, and one abstention.
All right, thank you. Mr. Reyes, you'll want to get with the Building Inspections Department and the Planning and Zoning Department tomorrow to give you some guidance on what you need to do next.
Mr. Chairman, our next application is BOZA 2023-017, Matthew Powell for property at 6030 Edith Avenue. Does any member of the board have any contact to disclose on this application?
No.
No, but I will need to recuse myself on this case, so I'm going to turn the floor over to Vice Chair Commissioner Jones to run this case. Karen, thank you.
You're welcome.
I am Laura Powell. My husband, Matthew, is at home.
Ms. Powell, can you hear me?
Absolutely.
She can hear you.
Okay, I heard you state your name, but we need your address as well for the record, and then if you could tell us about your project, please.
Okay, Laura Powell, again. My address is 6030 Edith, Kansas City, Kansas, 66104. And we have requested to build a shed on our property. And we had a standalone, our house was built in 1904, so we already had a standalone garage. So we had to request this through a variance to get the 10 by 14 shed approved.
Anything else?
I had to get this built. My mother passed away, and all of her contents of her house, a lot of it came to my house. And of course, I've lived in my house for 42 years, so I didn't have rooms. So my husband and I chose to build this shed. So we're hoping we can get it approved.
Okay, anything else going to be in the shed besides your mother's contents?
At this point, no. I mean, I'm renting a, you store it up at the old doljins on State Avenue, and then my garage is packed, and so currently, no, it will just be my mother's contents of things from her house.
Okay, thank you. Commissioners, do any one of you all have any questions for Mrs. Powell?
Sorry, this is Commissioner Isles. I have one. On page 11, I don't know if you can see that. There's a small yellow square in the top left-hand corner. Is that a building or a slab?
I can go back to my chair and get that, but there's, there's a... I had already had the landscapers put the cement AB3 pad down back. This all started in March, so that is the slab that the shed is going to be put on. There's not a building or anything on it.
Okay, I thought it was going to be... Okay, I thought it was gonna be closer to the street.
Nope, nope, it's in our north corner of our backyard. There's no streets or anything.
Okay, thanks.
We just started it with the pad and have not completed it, correct?
Right, everything had to stop when, again, we weren't aware that having the garage was our one standalone. Uh, because the house was built, of course, in nineteen oh four, that was, we had no idea. That we bought this through tough shed and they were saying, no, you gotta get, you know, a variance and all this to get this tough shed. So. We had it all ready in March, but it's still sitting there waiting.
We understand. Any other questions from the commissioners? None in the chamber, seeing none then. Is there anyone in the audience there in the chambers or online? Who want to speak either in favor of or in opposition to the applicant's request? I can't see any Gunner, is there anybody can?
Sorry, nobody in the chamber, Madam Chair.
And there's nobody online either.
Okay, good, thank you. So Director Hand, we'll go to you with your comments.
Famous Madam Chair, Gunner Hand, Director of Planning and Urban Design. Uh, again, this is a, a variance for a second extra, accessory structure in the R one zone. This is in the citywide comprehensive plan area, kind of in the midtown south, um, neighborhood. Um, we received no letters of support, no letters in opposition, there are no notions of violation on the property. Um, as this does not meet the intent of the code, staff does recommend denial. I mean, effectively, our comment would be, um, you should build a better garage, a, a single garage as opposed to a second structure. Um, which is typical for what we generally recommend on these instances. Staff does have recommend, uh, conditions of approval. Um, if the Board of Zoning Appeals wants to move forward with approval. I would just note on this site plan, um, as per the conversation earlier tonight, you were talking about a pad that's over here. Uh, the proposed site plan, we have, kind of has it more in the center of the property. Uh, at the center of the property, um, to the north. And again, I note this specifically because it does meet the seven feet side yard interior setback. Again, this is a corner lot, the house faces east or south is it south? This is facing south?
Facing south, yes.
Okay, so with a small correction. If the house faces south, I think we thought it was facing east. The rear yard setback would be back here and it needs to be thirty feet and the side yard interior setback would be on the. West property line and it needs to be back seven feet, otherwise you're gonna be back here for another variance. Keep that shit out of the side yards effect.
So. Tell me that again, what we need to do.
So, again, we thought you were okay, assuming that this was your front yard. But if you're telling us this is your front yard corner, that means this is your rear property line and the setback requirement is thirty feet. And this is your side yard and the setback is seven feet.
So we would have to move it.
You have to move it out of the setback.
How many feet is that?
You'll have to measure that with your contractor to do it. Again, the rear yard of a corner, the rear yard setback is thirty, the side yard setback is seven.
So we would have to move it to.
Thirty feet from here.
From there.
And just seven feet off of this angle, so, you know, you put it over here, it'd be fine.
Seven feet.
Yeah, seven feet from the side, thirty feet from the rear.
So, so Gunner, let me ask a question here, because we can't hear, at least I can't hear thing that, that, um. Mrs. Powell is saying, and that's not good. So, what, what is the reason for the discrepancy between what's in the case file? Versus the discussion that's going on now?
If you're looking at the site plan on the screen. With a corner yard, with a corner lot. Effectively, you have to choose what side is your front, right? Because it could be facing this side of the street or this side of the street. There are two entrances on this building. Staff had assumed that this was the site, was the front yard. Making this the rear yard of which the setback is more than thirty feet, right?
Uh huh.
And if this side is the front yard, this would be the side yard interior of which the setback would requirement is seven and they're just about eight here currently. The applicant just noted that her front yard is actually on this side of the street. Which then makes this a legal non-conforming garage in their front yard. And this, which means you can't rebuild it unless you come back and get another variance, because you're not meeting that setback requirement. Um, so more complications there, but. If, uh, and so instead of being placed here, which would be in the setback, it needs to be somewhere over here. Not in the setback. Or she can come back with another variance request.
Okay, because that's, that's presenting, I would imagine, a little bit of confusion and uncertainty. It just seems like doing it on the fly, but. I don't know if you have anything else you want to add. I see Commissioner Connolly has a question. Commissioner Connolly, go ahead with your question.
Yeah, so could that garage be non-conforming and not count as one of the, uh. Buildings?
Uh, no, it, it's, uh. The legal non-conformance section that I think you're referring to still has a limit of one. It's the, it allows a second legal non-conformant accessory structure if it's been there before a certain year. We had a case similar to that last month. So that would not, that section, if that's what you're referring to, would not apply to this garage.
And you asked what I'm referring to. Oh, great, thanks.
Yeah.
Okay, Commissioner Muller, you have a question. Go ahead, please. We can't hear you, Commissioner Muller. I think you're still muted.
I'm sorry. Uh, uh, according to my Google map or whatever map that I'm looking at. It's actually showing the garage as the front of the house. So I guess what we need to find out is. What's the address of the house in relation to which street?
It's addressed on Edith.
Okay, so would that make the garage the front of the house?
Correct, it's in the front yard.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Gunner, is that what you said earlier, makes it a legal non-conforming?
Correct.
So then there are just still other given that staff thought the. Was the one that it's not. I mean, how comfortable do you feel with any changes that need to be made? With regard to the case in terms of moving forward or is there other work that needs to be done? I mean, we're not looking to delay things, of course, but you tell us your thoughts with the change.
Um, Gunner Hand, Director of Planner and Design, I think there's plenty of yard to find a place for the shed. I think it would just potentially mean they have to pour a new foundation at that new location. A new.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Because it's existing.
Yeah, we had the slab down, right, correct?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yes, we had it poured in March before all this began. And no one told us that it was gonna have to be moved. I mean, we've been dealing with this since March. And we would have had it changed months ago. To move it to the other side. I mean, ah, now we're into this since March. And now because you guys thought that Sixtieth was the front of the house instead of Edith. Now I have to pay the landscapers to come out and do another plot. I mean, we can move it, but it's gonna be another eight hundred dollars just to, you know, I can't, it's not something I can just. Do overnight. Now I've got to pay another eight hundred dollars to get another one done, so I'm.
Yeah, I mean, I agree, I agree with you, because, I mean, based off the address, we would assume. That they would have assumed that that was the front of the unit, but, um, but, um. Um, and I think it's a hardship on you.
The pad was laid before the application was made. So nothing that staff said directed her to pour pad.
Oh, I didn't, I didn't. That's not what I'm saying. I'm saying. I'm saying the assumption of that being the front of the house. And y'all assuming that the other street, which is not on her address, is the front of the house, is, I'm saying is the error. Her pouring the slab was, is all on her. You understand what I'm saying? I'm just saying, why would staff assume that that was the front of the house when the address is different? That's the question I'm asking you, Gunner. I'm asking you, Gunner.
Why didn't that come up before tonight that they?
I'm asking Gunner. I'm sorry, ma'am, I, good job.
Better hand, Director Planner and Design. Staff assumed because they had already come to us with a pad. That the front yard was on the sixty, was on Sixtieth regardless of Edith. It is news to us that they consider Edith as their front yard today.
But you ain't the front yard where the addresses?
It's, it's a call.
Okay.
And no, you're right, typically it is based on Edith Avenue, but again, because the pad was already poured, I think we were trying to work with the applicant.
Okay, well, I thank you for trying to work with the applicant, thank you.
You're good, Commissioner Connolly?
I am.
Okay. Any of the other commissioners have any questions?
Commissioner Beth, I have a question.
Go ahead, Commissioner Beth.
Yeah, Gunner, if this was not requiring a variance, if the other garage wasn't there and she was just building a shed, otherwise. Does the setback, the thirty-foot setback and stuff still apply?
Yes, it does.
Thank you.
So can I ask a question?
Madam Chairman, um, Commissioner Ernst has his hand up.
Commissioner Ernst and then. Commissioner Isles, did you have a question?
No, I don't.
Okay, Commissioner Ernst.
Knowing what we know now, however we got there. They still need another, an additional variance because of where the pad is currently, correct, Gunner? Because of the setback or lack thereof?
She could seek a new variance, an additional variance for, um, a setback violation. If she wanted to not spend a hundred, eight hundred dollars to move the pad, correct?
I, I'm not suggesting that. I'm just saying, unless we do something else, we can't approve what's in front of us right now. Because it will create another problem.
There's nothing in the either, there's nothing in the conditions of approval of the current variance. That requires her to put it where she, where the applicant put the existing slab. I think if the variance was. Approved this evening without a setback variance, it would simply have to move out of the setbacks. I don't think it would. The only reason, so, but if she wanted to stay on the current pad, yes, she would have to come back for another variance. So if that were the case, you could approve now and have her come back later. Hold over for another month to add this variance to this case and here at all at the same time. Um, or approve the second accessory structure and just have them move it into a location that is not in a setback.
Yes.
And Madam Chair, the applicant is requesting, uh, to speak again.
Okay, uh, let me, gone, let me go to Commissioner Connolly with his question first.
Gunner, I guess, can we add the variance?
Notice, no, we can't. We have to notice it and go through the proper procedures, so.
We gotta do what?
Uh, adding a variance would require a new notice.
Because we, I think we've added branches before. I'm pretty sure we have, but you saying we can't now?
I can't speak for past decisions, but no, you cannot add a variance without noticing it first. We couldn't, I mean, you could add it, but we couldn't make a decision on it until it's been noticed in the public.
Okay.
We just give it as advice. Um, Mrs. Powell, go ahead, please.
I guess my question is, uh, because of course I had this rescheduled for next week. Um, I will now have to, if I had the landscaping company come out. And make a new plot, seven feet on the west side of my backyard. Then I could just have it moved over there and I don't have to go through doing a variance or anything. I can just move the shed. It's, the shed is not gonna be anchored down. It's gonna be movable. It's ten by fourteen. So if I was to call the landscaping people that put the first pad down and told them to put it on the west side. Would I, could I? Get it done? Or do we have to go through more?
So, Gunner Hand, Director of Planner and Design, again, what is before us tonight is. Should she have a second accessory structure or not, period? That is the discussion that we need to focus in on. If you guys agree that she should have a second structure at the Board of Zoning Appeals, then my recommendation would be to work with the applicant after that fact. And we can work on where it needs to be, or maybe there's something in there that it's fine, right? So I think we're going down a rabbit's hole a little bit. We're not focused on what the case at hand is before us. If we, if the Board of Zoning Appeals agrees there, that she should have a second accessory structure, staff will work with her on citing that accordingly.
Thank you, Gunner, I would agree with that. Uh, Commissioner Muller, you have a question. Commissioner Muller, you're on mute.
Is it relevant at all when the garage was built? As far as it being potentially grandfathered in and not an accessory structure?
Um, Gunner Hand, Director Planner and Design. Again, I think there's a provision in the code that we, that I just mentioned, uh, for a question from Commissioner Connolly. I don't think anything would negate the fact that it is an accessory structure. Um, and I believe. Uh, the section of the code is only referenced to more than one accessory structure, right? So there's a provision in the code that allows a second accessory structure if built before a certain date. Um, to be considered legal non-conforming, but this is the single one accessory structure, so that is not germane to the case.
Okay, thank you.
But really, to sum it up, we are, we are getting off focus here, second accessory structure. And that's the question on the table and the applicant, um, unfortunately has other things that. Uh, she has to take care of beyond that because of where the pad is. And just also want to make a comment. I, I think Mrs. Powell, I heard you say something about it's movable. I didn't really get that because it's a concrete pad. And so in the shed going to go on the concrete pad, thus making it unmovable.
It, it is not gonna be anchored down, it's just a pad to sit on. So it's not gonna have any kind of anchor holding it down. We're not cementing it to the pad.
But correct me if I'm wrong, you'd unlikely move it. Not that I want to go down that trail, but I just wanted to point out, I didn't get that it was. I don't understand it not being movable. I hear you saying it's not anchored down, but normally it's gonna be on a pad, but.
Right.
Okay.
On a pad. And so we had that done.
Okay, Commissioner Connolly, you have another question?
I was just gonna make my motion.
Okay, we're ready for a motion.
Motion to approve with staff stipulations and also that the, uh, partitioner. Gets with staff to find the proper location.
Thank you, is there a second?
Second, Commissioner Ward.
Thank you, Commissioner Ward. Any discussion? Janet, roll call, please.
Armstrong.
Aye.
Beth.
Aye.
Connolly.
Aye.
Isles.
Aye.
Ernst.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Muller.
Aye.
Straus.
Aye.
Ward.
Aye.
That motion to recommend or to approve this appeal passes nine in favor and none opposed.
Thank you, Janet. Mrs. Powell, if you could get with, um, staff. Then that would be the best thing in your path moving forward.
Okay.
Thank you.
Hey, Madam Chair, I'm assuming that Mr. Carson is back at his chair taking over the chairmanship.
Yes, I am. Thank you, Commissioner Jones.
You're welcome.
Chairman Carson, would you like to make a motion or make a announcement about the planning commission meeting? Cause we are almost thirty minutes behind.
Yes, I'm sorry. Thank you all for your patience. We have a couple more cases to hear for the border zoning appeals. We will take a five minute break after that meeting and we'll go right into the city planning. So I appreciate your patience while we deal with a lengthy agenda.
Our next appeal is BOZA twenty twenty-three dash zero two-three Andrea Rand for property at fifty-two hundred State Avenue. Does any member of the board have any contact to disclose on this application?
No.
Thank you.
Are you in the audience? Okay, I've got you queued up, ready to speak. Go and give us, please, your name and address and tell us what you'd like to do here.
Okay, hello, can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Okay, thank you to members of the board. My name is Andrea Rand and I am with ISG. We are the design firm representing U-Haul. ISG, just to give an address, is seventy-nine hundred International Drive Suite five fifty in Minneapolis, Minnesota, five-five-four-two-five. As I said, we serve as the design firm representing U-Haul. With this board of adjust, Board of Zoning and Adjustments proposal, we have two variances presented to you tonight. And then addition, there is also a preliminary development plan and a final development plan that will be heard at the planning commission later on tonight. That is in for concurrent review, just so you know of all the applications that we have in for review. With the proposal, we are, it's an existing U-Haul site. There is an existing retail, you help, U-Haul building, there are existing storage units, and then it is a site where it also rents vehicles, rental trucks. U-Haul is proposing to build a new building on the site, on the east side of the site where there is currently just a parking lot. So they're not reducing any green space area. They would be taking a portion of the parking lot for a new building footprint and that building would be to serve for a U-Box storage. And so U-Boxes are essentially like a moving box or pod that is delivered to your house and then U-Haul would pick it up and then bring it onsite to U-Haul and it would store that moving box. And so there would be no customers, additional customers from the new building that they would like to build on the site. We are working with a large site. It's about seven acres. And so there is, this site was, I think, one of the biggest things to know is the site has been in existence for quite a while, well before the current zoning has been in place. And so much of the site is not in conformance with the zoning code. And so when we're looking to build the U-Box building, as we have been proposed, we are limited by site constraints that exist today. What we are seeing is with the variance before you, there are two variances. One is we are requesting a parking reduction from the required number of parking spaces. And then the second one is a reduction in the number of trees required onsite. As the first, I guess I'll address the first requirement and that is the parking. If you look at the staff report, it says that there are two hundred and eighty-five parking spaces that would be required to serve if you do the calculations based on the code. As you see in the staff report, we're requesting sixty-one parking spaces. That would be a violation or reduction of two hundred and twenty-four parking spaces. If you visit the site and like at the programming, the use is storage. And so it doesn't, you know, bring a lot of retail customers at the same time. If you would look at the number of visitors and talk to U-Haul, they typically have three, five, seven, you know, vehicles at most at one time visiting the site. And so even having the sixty-one parking spaces on the site would be much greater than the business would ever require. And so we feel because it's a unique use, it's not a high-traffic retail use that a variance is appropriate in this situation. And then the second variance that we are requesting is the reduction of the number of trees to be planted onsite. With the calculations, it says that a minimum of forty-seven trees are required. And through all of our site design and our landscaping, we are actually going to increase the number. Right now, the site is deficient forty-seven trees, but with our proposed development, we are going to be including thirty-three, actually, if we've updated our plans. So there will be thirty-five new trees on the site. That will be thirteen trees internally throughout the parking lot in sight and then twenty-two trees along the street frontage. Right now, there are no street trees and no landscaping at all on the street runage. And so even though we're requesting a variance, we're actually bringing the site into much greater conformance and to the code today. So that's kind of a brief summary of the two variance requests and the programming. If you guys have questions, we are certainly available to answer any and appreciate your time and consideration tonight.
Great, thank you very much. Any questions for the applicant, Commissioner Conley?
Guess the applicant, she kind of confused me. I mean, so you need a variance for the forty-seven trees? Or you don't? Cause it sound like you, you act, when you was kind of closing, you were saying that you was gonna have more trees than what's required? Or is it you need a variance for the location of the trees?
Okay, so yeah, sorry, I'll clarify this. Per the code, forty-seven trees are required on the site. And we are proposing thirty-three trees. And so with actually thirty-five now. And so we're in violation of, I guess, we need a reduction of, the staff report says fourteen trees to meet the code requirement. So we are asking for a reduction in the number of trees required, but we're increasing, you know, we're, we're bringing it into greater conformance. Right now, if it was just left, as is the site's forty-seven trees, you know, delinquent of meeting the code, and now we're going to be fourteen trees, if that makes sense.
Okay, so you saying that right now, you don't have forty-seven?
Yes.
When you do do the construction, if allowed, you would have thirty-five and you'll, you'll be thirteen short?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Jones?
I just wanted to point out that, and I don't think the synopsis of information that we have on the BOZA agenda is correct because it says that a minimum of forty-seven trees is required, but the applicant is requesting zero trees violation forty-seven. So that needs to be corrected.
The new slide up in front of all of us on the screen does say a violation of fourteen trees now. Other questions or comments for the applicant? Okay, seeing none, we'll go to the audience. Anyone in the audience want to speak to this case in favor or in opposition? Please raise your hand or come forward. I have Kathleen online. Kathleen, go ahead and unmute yourself, please. Give us your name and address.
Hi, my name is Kathleen Ottaviano and my address is actually two-two-six Nob Hill Drive in California. I'm the property owner of fifty-fifty State Avenue that's adjacent to the applicant and I have zero problem as, I think, the adjacent property owner to what they are asking for and support the request.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else in the audience want to speak to this case? Seeing none, we'll close the public portion of the meeting. We'll go to Director Han to get his comment.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Again, we have two variances regarding this case for the U-Haul expansion. Again, one is one that we've dealt with in the past. Again, our code does not have a specific standard for parking for so, storage facilities. Every self-storage facility that's come through here in the last three years, we've had this very same conversation. And it as in regards to the second variance for landscaping, staff does have a couple of comments. This is in the citywide comprehensive plan area right there in the midtown area of State Avenue. Staff received no letters of support until this evening during public comment, no letters in opposition. There is quite a history of police reports and violations on this property as can be anticipated for a self-storage location. There's usually quite a bit of police activity called into, to these facilities. And this one's been here for a long, long time. So I say old and long because it's been for quite some time. But there are quite a few police reports related to this property. Again, I think, as I mentioned a little bit earlier, staff recommends approval of the parking variance with conditions. If you carefully read the conditions of approval, one of the conditions of approval requires the forty-seven trees. So staff believes that you should approve the parking variance, but do not landscaping variance. We believe there's plenty of space on the site to get all forty-seven required trees. There's also a provision in the code where we can start to count some of the existing trees kind of on the property, you know, along the, kind of around here. So we believe between that and the thirty-five provided that we could probably with maybe a couple more trees added on the parkway, get that one covered. So we would recommend approval of the parking variance, denial of the, with conditions that say meet the forty-seven trees and denial of the landscape variance, because we think we can fit those in there.
All right, thank you. Questions for Director Hand? Commissioner Isles?
Commissioner Isles, this might be a question for the applicant. Where are you going to put all the cars that are, or the vehicles that are currently parked where you want to put the building?
Great. We're going to go back to Ms. Rand. Could you, could you answer that question, please?
Sure, yeah, that's just programming for U-Haul. There's a lot of space behind the existing retail building. And, you know, they might have a few less of those rental vehicles onsite to accommodate the new storage use as well.
All right, thank you. Other questions? Sorry, I have another, someone else that wants to speak, Nathan Felix. Mr. Felix, go ahead and give us your full name and address, please.
Nathan Felix, fifty-two hundred State Avenue. Here in Kansas City, Kansas. So we would, like Andrew just said, we would have less vehicles at the location or we park on the west side, where we currently don't have many vehicles there. We just have to move around and work with our logistics and whatnot to limit some of the equipment into the area.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else in the public want to speak to this case? I think I've already closed that portion anyway. We're back to Director Hand. Any questions for Director Hand, excuse me? Seeing none, I'll stand for a motion when ready. Commissioner Ward. Commissioner Ward, go ahead.
I move to approve both variances on BOZA two-zero-two-three dash zero-two-three, subject to staff stipulations and comments.
A motion has been made to approve both variance one and variance two, according to staff stipulations. Is there a second? Commissioner Jones?
That's a second.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Chair, point of clarification, if you want to approve the landscape variance, you would want to also eliminate condition number four, which says you have to plant forty-seven trees. So if you wanted to prove the landscape variance to just allow the thirty-five, the applicant mentioned, staff's recommendation would be to change that to say thirty-five, number four.
Commissioner Ward? Done. All right. So it's been, the motion has been amended to delete, or sorry, to amend requirement number four to say thirty-five trees, correct? All right, is that okay, Commissioner Jones? Who had the second?
I'm good with that.
Thank you. Any discussion on the amended motion? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Armstrong?
Aye.
Beth?
Aye.
Conley?
Aye.
Isles?
Aye.
Ernst?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Muller?
Aye.
Straws?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, that motion to approve this appeal for variance one and two, subject to the revised conditions passes ten in favor and none opposed.
Thank you.
That takes us to our next application, which is BOZA twenty twenty-three dash zero-two-four Austin Thompson for property at forty-one eleven North Ninety-seventh Street. Does any member of the board have any contact to disclose with regard to this case?
No.
Thank you.
Mr. Thompson, go ahead.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Austin Thompson and I'm with Atlas Land Consulting, fourteen-five-hundred Parallel Road, Unit R, Baser, Kansas, six-six-zero-zero-seven. This is a case from last month that we asked to extend over to this month as we wanted to rework lot one and to eliminate some of the variances. I do think the agenda still has those variances listed, but we resent a new layout to plant, the planning department, basically removing all of the variances needed for lot one. So the two variances that we were asking for are just in relation to lot two. This is just a large, basically twenty-three and a half acre parcel that we're cutting five acres out of and then leaving the remaining as eighteen and a half acres. And that's what the variances are needed for. But I'm happy to answer any question you guys may have.
All right, thank you. Any questions for the applicant? Seeing none, we'll go to the audience. Anyone in the audience want to speak to this case in favor or in opposition? Please come forward or raise your hand if you're online. Seeing no one, we'll go to Director Han to get his comment.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Director of Planning and Design, as applicant noted, this case was carried over from the last hearing with the direction to remove the variances from one of those lots. The applicant did do that. Again, it looks very similar to previous month. But essentially, we have lot one that is in full compliance and lot two. Let me get to a map that this helps a little bit better. And lot two, let's do there. And lot two, that's further exacerbated. So lot one is now in full compliance. And if you remember, part of the issue here was the parcel is already not conforming to the three-to-one depth ratio. So by adding, taking a chunk of that width for a second lot, it exacerbates the three-to-one, creates the frontage issue, but effectively squeezes in a legal parcel as was directed. So with that direction from the planning, excuse me, the Board of Zoning Appeals last month, I will just quickly go through that this is again in the Prairie Delaware Piper area plan. We received no letters of support, no letters of opposition. There's an old notice of violation on this property for maintenance. Staff does recommend approval of the variances for lot two.
Thank you. Questions for Director Hand? Seeing none, I'll stand for motion when ready. Commissioner Ward, go ahead.
I move to approve both variances for BOZA two-zero-two-three dash zero-two-four, subject to staff stipulations and comments.
And that's for lot two, correct?
That's correct.
All right, thank you. Is there a second, Commissioner Jones?
That is a second, thank you.
Thank you. Any discussion on the motion for approval? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Armstrong?
Aye.
Beth?
Aye.
Conley?
Aye.
Isles?
Aye.
Ernst?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Muller?
Aye.
Straws?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, that motion to approve this variance for lot two, subject to the conditions in the staff report, passes ten in favor and none opposed.
Thank you.
Our next application is BOZA twenty twenty-three dash zero-three-two Austin Thompson for property at eighty-five oh-one and eighty-five oh-five Kansas Avenue. Does any member of the board have any contact to disclose regarding this application?
No.
Thank you.
Mr. Thompson, you're up again.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Austin Thompson. I'm with Atlas Land Consulting, fourteen-five-hundred Parallel Road, Unit R, Baser, Kansas, six-six-zero-zero-seven. And what we're looking to do on this project is we're basically cutting out a quarter acre, little over a quarter acre lot. And the variances are requesting that Kansas Avenue is a major street and requires three hundred foot of frontage and five acres. And simply the, the idea to cut that out of this area, it just doesn't, it's not feasible. So that's what we're asking for the variances for the three hundred foot of frontage and then the lot being five acres.
All right, thank you. Questions for the applicant? Seeing none, we'll go to the public. Anyone in the audience want to speak to this case? Please raise your hand or come to the microphone. Seeing none, we'll go to Director Hand, get comment.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Director of Planning and Urban Design, again, this case is being heard in conjunction with plat twenty-twenty-three dash zero-one-four, which will be heard later this evening by the City Planning Commission. As the applicant noted, this is for a variance for minimum area and frontage along a major thoroughfare in the R-one zone. If you, this is in the citywide comprehensive plans, we're in the midtown south area, just down the freeway, north of the river, right off Kansas. Right off Kansas Avenue. If you were to zoom in a little bit here, what you can kind of see is this is one of those situations where clearly at one point this was one big agricultural parcel. And previously under county rules, you could sort of build a second or a third dwelling unit on that farmstead if it was a family member. And so this probably property probably got sold over time. One of those houses got kind of parceled out. This is essentially set partiallying out that second house because we have two dwelling units on one parcel, which you can't have. So they're trying to legalize that. What happens though is you can kind of see that this lot right here, the big one is split zoned. So the house in question is R one, the rest of the parcel is AG. When you pull out, when the, if and when the plat is approved, it'll carve out the house, but leave a little bit of R one still in that AG zone. So one of the conditions of approval is for that larger parcel to come back and fix that split zoning. What that plat will also do is if you kind of dive a little bit deeper into this photo, you can kind of see there's multiple accessory structures. Two of those accessory structures will remain in the larger AG parcel and only one accessory structure. So they're compliant there. But again, what that, the way they cut that up, it leaves some R one in the AG. So we just are asking them to come back to do that. So we received no letters of support, no letters of opposition. There's no notices of violation on this property. Staff recommends approval.
Thank you. Any questions for staff? Seeing none, I'll stand for a motion when ready.
Commissioner Ward.
Go ahead, Commissioner Ward.
I move to approve Boza two zero two three dash zero three two. Subject staff stipulations and comments.
Thank you. Motion made for approval by Commissioner Ward. Is there a second? Commissioner Ernst?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Moved and seconded for approval. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, roll call.
Armstrong.
Hi.
Beth.
Hi.
Conley.
Hi.
Isles.
Hi.
Ernst.
Hi.
Jones.
Hi.
Miller.
Commissioner Miller. Thank you.
Moller.
Hi.
Straws.
Hi.
Ward.
Hi.
Commissioner, that motion to approve, subject to the conditions passes ten in favor and none opposed.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, our last item on the Board of Zoning Appeals agenda is BOZA twenty twenty-three dash zero three three. Austin Thompson for property of one two five one zero and one two five two zero Donahue Road. Does any member of the board have any contact disclosed regarding this case?
No.
Thank you.
Hey, Mr. Thompson, you have the last two cases at five minutes or less. So if you get this one done, you will be moved up to the chairman's favorite list. So please go ahead.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Austin Thompson. I'm with Atlas Land Consulting, fourteen five hundred Parallel Road, Unit R, Baser, Kansas, six six zero zero seven. What we're looking to do on this property here is is very similar to the last one. We're doing a lot line adjustment. There is two properties that the total distance between them is five hundred feet. And the owner basically lives at one two five two zero Donahue and recently purchased his neighbor's property to the east. He would like to just acquire an one hundred additional feet. So his property will now be three hundred feet in width while the neighbor to the east will now be two hundred width. There's a total of five hundred. So neither one can, or excuse me, one of them cannot reach the three hundred feet. And then the other two options for the acreage, neither one of them are over five acres. So that is the other purpose of the variances is to bypass the five acres.
All right. Thank you. Any questions for the applicant? Seeing none, anyone in the audience want to speak to this case? Come to the microphone or raise your hand if you're online. Seeing no one, we will close public portion of the meeting. We'll go to Director Hand and get his comment.
Famous Chair Gunner Hand, Director of Planning and Urban Design. As applicant noted, this case is a result of administrative lot split where essentially you're just sort of flipping the dimensions of the two properties. Because the property owner to the west wants a little bit more in their property. So it doesn't really terribly change the character of the neighborhood or quite frankly, even the dimensions of the two parcels that literally just kind of flips them. And so this is in the Prairie Delaware Piper area plan. Staff has received no letters of support, no letters of opposition. There are no notices of violation on the property. Again, we're basically moving this lot property line over a hundred feet. And you can see over the course of development in the last ten fifteen years, it's not inconsistent with everything else on Donahue. Staff recommends approval of all variants with.
All right. Thank you. Any questions for staff? Seeing none, I'll stand for a motion.
Commissioner Ward.
Commissioner Ward, go ahead.
Make a motion to approve Boza two zero two three dash zero three three. Subject staff stipulations and comments.
Thank you. Motion made for approval by Commissioner Ward. Is that a second, Commissioner Armstrong?
Yes, it is.
Thank you. Any discussion on the motion for approval? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Armstrong.
Hi.
Beth.
Hi.
Conley.
Hi.
Isles.
Hi.
Ernst.
Hi.
Jones.
Hi.
Miller.
Hi.
Moller.
Hi.
Straws.
Hi.
Ward.
Hi.
Mr. Chairman, that motion to approve this appeal, subject to the conditions passes ten in favor and none opposed.
Thank you. And this will conclude the Board of Zoning Appeals agenda. So we will take a five minute recess and then we will convene the City Planning Commission. Thank you all for your patience. We'll see you in just a few.
Been here till one AM.
Janet, are you ready?
Yes, sir, I am.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for your patience. We're going to go ahead and start the Planning Commission meeting. My name is Jeff Carson. I'm serving as chair of tonight's meeting. Commissioner Karen Jones is serving as the vice chair. Take a couple of introductions before we start. Gunner Hand is the chairman of the, or excuse me, the director of the Planning and Urban Design Department. Byron Toy is also with us, employee of the department, excuse me, Department of Planning and Urban Design, as well as Janet Parker, the executive assistant to the Department of Planning and Urban Design. She will outline in a few moments how we'll run tonight's meeting. We also have Jeff Conway with Unified Government Legal Counsel and the following Board of Zoning, excuse me, Planning Commission Commissioners are present tonight. Brandy Armstrong, Dwayne Beth, James Connolly, James Ernst, Karen Jones, Jake Miller, Mark Muller, Rose Isles, Joseph Straws and Aaron Ward. So with that, I will turn the meeting over to Secretary Parker and she will explain how we will run tonight's meeting. Thank you all again for your patience.
We would like to welcome those participating to the meeting of the City Planning Commission. The members are participating remotely by Zoom webinar or in person in the commission chamber. Mr. Jeff Carson is serving as chairman this evening. Please note the following instructions for the meeting. If you are joining by Zoom video, please make sure you have an appropriate background. Planning Commission members attending by Zoom, please use the raise your hand feature to speak. After Chairman Carson recognizes you, unmute your microphone and please state your name when you begin to speak. If you are in person in the commission chamber, when Chairman Carson recognizes you, please state your name before speaking. For those members of the public in attendance via Zoom or telephone, use the raise your hand feature when you want to speak on an issue. The chairman will recognize you when it is your time to speak. Unmute your microphone and state your name and address before giving your comments. If you are attending in person, please come to the microphone at the front of the room when the application is called and the chairman will recognize you when it is your time to speak. Proper meeting decorum is expected of all participating in the meeting and anyone who fails to act properly will be removed from the meeting. The city reserves the right to discontinue a meeting if any improper behavior occurs, which prevents the uninterrupted conduct of business. The Planning Commission is a voluntary body of citizens which will review each zoning proposal. For all change of zones, special use permits, vacations and preliminary plan reviews on tonight's agenda, the Planning Commission makes recommendations to the Unified Government Board of Commissioners who will then make the final decisions on Thursday, August thirty-one, twenty twenty-three. For final plots and final plan reviews heard tonight, the Planning Commission's decision is final and there will not be another hearing. The format for this evening's meeting is as follows. The applicant will make the opening statement explaining the proposal. Please note that the applicant will be given fifteen minutes to present their case. The fifteen minutes includes the applicant, consultants and other members of the applicant's team. Members of the Planning Commission will then address any questions they may have to the applicant. Any persons wishing to speak in favor will be called upon and allowed to do so at that time. Then those persons in opposition will be called upon and allowed to make their statements and ask questions. Please note that each member of the public who wishes to speak will be given five minutes to express their opinions. Time may not be shared between speakers. A speaker may request to extend their time and the Planning Commission may by two-third majority vote, extend any speaker's time in five-minute increments. The chairman will ask for a show of hands of those persons in support and in opposition that do not wish to speak. The applicant will then answer questions and make a closing statement. The public hearing portion of the meeting will be closed and the public will only be allowed to address the commission if a question is directed to them from the chairman. The Planning Commission will discuss the application and make their recommendation. If persons in opposition want to formally protest a change of zone or special use permit, a means is available by a legal protest petition, which can be obtained along with the necessary instructions by emailing the Planning and Urban Design Department at planninginfo@ycokk.org tomorrow morning. Any application receiving unanimous vote of recommendation by the Planning Commission will appear on the consent agenda of the Unified Government Board of Commissioners. Unless there's a request to remove an item from the consent agenda by the applicant, a member of the Unified Government Commission or other interested parties, the Planning Commission's recommendation will be adopted. The consent agenda is heard at the beginning of the meeting at seven PM. The Planning Commission will also have a consent agenda as part of their meeting this evening. The consent agenda is the first part of the agenda and items on the consent agenda are final plots, final plans or special use permit renewals that have received a staff recommendation to approve. final plans, or special use permit renewals that have received a staff recommendation to approve. Unless there is a request to remove an item from the Consent Agenda by the applicant, a member of the staff, a member of the Planning Commission, or other interested parties, the staff recommendation on all of the items on the Consent Agenda will be adopted by the Planning Commission at one time. I will read a list of agenda items on the Consent Agenda, and when I have completed the list, the Chairman will ask if there are any requests to remove items. This is your time to use the Raise Your Hand feature, be recognized, and request that an item be removed from the Consent Agenda if you do not agree with the staff recommendation. If you are in the Commission Chamber, please come to the microphone, state your name and address, and the item you want to remove from the Consent Agenda. The Planning Commission is required to disclose contacts about any item on the Planning Commission Agenda. Before each item, I will ask if any contacts have been made, and members of the Commission will be asked to disclose those contacts. Please note that your opinions will be forwarded to the governing body for their consideration in making a final decision on Thursday, August thirty-one, two thousand and twenty-three, at seven P M. I will now read the items on the Consent Agenda. Consideration of the July ten, two thousand and twenty-three Planning Commission Minutes. Platt, two thousand and twenty-three dash zero one four, Austin Thompson with Atlas Land Consulting. Final plaque to create two lots to correct two houses constructed on one lot at eighty-five oh five Kansas Avenue. Plan Review Application, P R, two thousand and twenty-three dash zero two-two, Brody Share with North Point. Final Development Plan to construct three warehouses for Turner Logistics Center West at seventy-two hundred Terome Avenue. The items I have just read are on the Consent Agenda. At this time, does any member of the Commission wish to disclose any contact on any of these items?
No.
No.
Please include the following items as part of the record for the items on the Consent Agenda. The city's currently adopted zoning and subdivision regulations, the official zoning map for the area in question, the city's currently adopted master plan for the area in question, the staff report and attachments dated August fourteen, two thousand and twenty-three, the application and other documents, plans, pictures, and maps submitted by the applicant, in furtherance of the case and contained in the official file, and the notices to property owners. The Commission will vote to approve in one vote these items unless someone requests that an item be removed from the Consent Agenda.
Thank you. Does anyone on the Commission wish to have anything removed from the Consent Agenda for consideration? Okay, seeing none, anyone in the audience want to have anything removed from the Consent Agenda for special consideration? Okay, seeing none, I will entertain a motion to approve the Consent Agenda as presented. Commissioner Jones?
Motion to approve the Consent Agenda in its entirety.
Thank you. Motion made for approval on the Consent Agenda. Is there a second? Commissioner Ernst?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Armstrong, or I'm sorry, I'm starting thinking back of Board of Zoning Appeals. Isles?
Aye.
Ernst?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Muller?
Aye.
Straws?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Armstrong?
Aye.
Beth?
Aye.
Connolly?
Aye.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, that motion to approve the items on the Consent Agenda with the staff conditions passes ten in favor and none opposed.
Thank you.
And neither of these items move forward to the Board of Commissioners meeting.
Thank you.
That concludes the Consent Agenda, and we will now move on to the non-consent agenda, to the special use permits. First one is special use permit application, S P two thousand and twenty-three dash zero four three, Casey Outlook Rosedale LLC. Special use permit to operate a children's daycare at twenty-six oh five West Thirty-Ninth Avenue. The former application, S P twenty twenty dash zero seven six, expired December ten, two thousand and twenty-two. Please include the following items as part of the record for this case. The city's currently adopted zoning and subdivision regulations, the official zoning map for the area in question, the city's currently adopted master plan for the area in question, the staff report and attachments dated August fourteen, two thousand and twenty-three, the application and other documents, plans, pictures, and maps submitted by the applicant in furtherance of the case and contained in the official file, the notice in the wine dot echo, and the notices to property owners. Does any member of the Commission have any contact to disclose with regard to this case?
No.
All right, thank you.
Hey, sir, I've got you queued up, ready to speak. If you would, please give us your name and address, please.
Mr. Chair, point of order, we should be hearing S P twenty twenty-three zero three four, and she called zero four three.
That is correct, Mr. Chairman. I just jumped ahead one.
Come back to Mr. Vans.
I've got Mr. Vans.
It's not the case that Ms. Parker just called.
I called the wrong case.
Right, you did call the daycare, excuse me, so.
I did. I skipped one. I'm sorry. I apologize. I guess I was hurrying us along. So let me go back up to special use permit application, S P two thousand and twenty-three dash zero three four, James Vans. Special use permit to keep twenty chickens at ninety-three fifty Nelson Lane. Current special use permit, S P two thousand and twenty-one dash zero three six, expired July eight, two thousand and twenty-three. Please include the following items as part of the record for this case. The city's currently adopted zoning and subdivision regulations, the official zoning map for the area in question, the city's currently adopted master plan for the area in question, the staff report and attachments dated August fourteen, two thousand and twenty-three, the application and other documents, plans, pictures, and maps submitted by the applicant in furtherance of the case and contained in the official file, the notice in the wine dot echo, and the notices to property owners. Does any member of the Commission have any contact to disclose on this application?
No.
Thank you.
Mr. Vans, I've got you queued up, ready to speak. If you would, please give us your name and address. We apologize for the confusion.
Not a problem. My name is Jim Vans, ninety-three fifty Nelson Lane, Kansas City, Kansas, six-six-one oh nine.
Okay, and tell us what you'd like to do here.
We're just wanting to renew our special use permit that we had gotten two years ago to continue to house twenty chickens on our property. Especially with the price of eggs today, we find this very beneficial.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for the applicant? Seeing none, is there anyone in the audience that wants to speak to this case in favor or in opposition? Raise your hand or come to the microphone. Seeing none, we'll go to Director Hand and get his comment.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Gunnar Hand, Director of Planning and Urban Design. This S U P is for the keeping of twenty hens on the property. This is in the Prairie Delaware Piper Area Plan. Staff received no letters of support, no letters of opposition. There are no notices of violation on the property as relates to the use. Staff recommends approval for five year with conditions.
Thank you. Any questions for Director Hand? Seeing none, I'll stand for a motion when ready.
Commissioner Ward.
Commissioner Ward, go ahead.
I make a motion to approve special use permit application two zero two-three dash zero three four, subject to staff stipulations and comments.
And for how many years?
I believe it was two. Is that correct?
Five.
Five, five. There you go.
All right. Thank you. Motion made for approval for five years made by Commissioner Ward. Is that a second, Commissioner Jones?
Yes, it is.
Thank you. Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Isles?
Aye.
Ernst?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Muller?
Aye.
Straws?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Armstrong?
Aye.
Beth?
Aye.
Connolly?
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, that motion to recommend approval of S P thirty-four for five years, subject to the conditions in the staff report, passes ten in favor and none opposed.
Thank you. This will be heard once again on August thirty-first at seven P M before the Board of County Commissioners. Thank you, sir.
Mr. Chairman, we'll go back to the application that I'd already called. Special use permit application, S P two thousand and twenty-three dash zero four three, Casey Outlook Rosedale LLC. Special use permit to operate a children's daycare at twenty-six oh five West Thirty-Ninth Avenue. Former application, S P two thousand and twenty dash zero seven six, expired twelve-ten, two thousand and twenty-two. Mr. Chairman, since I've already read the rest of this, I will skip over it if that's okay with you.
That's fine. Thank you. Dr. Farisadi, I've got you queued up, ready to speak. If you would, please start off with your name and address and tell us about your project.
Thank you very much, eminent Commission members and the Chairman and their staff. My name is Faris Farisadi. The address is twenty-six oh five West Thirty-Ninth Avenue, K C K six-six-one oh three, and my residential address is one-twenty-seven oh four Woodson Street, Overland Park, Kansas, six-six-two-nine, two oh nine. As I am sure maybe you remember, this had, this was a blighted building that we purchased, and during the last four years, we had two S U Ps, thanks to the efforts of the staff and approval of the governing body, and this is the the last step of renewing our S U P before we actually enter operation. I am glad to report to the Commission that the building is a state-of-the-art preschool center, which with the best quality of equipment possible, the parameters have been designed and developed to also the best possibilities, including a hydroponic garden, a splash pad that we are installing for the kids, a blueberry patch, the every amenity that we could for development of a child, we have put inside this, this project within the, within the possibilities of the, of the premises. From the curriculum point of view, we have designed a very scientifically-based curriculum, and we are pursuing national certification at the same time that we are now in the last step of getting the estate, estate licensing. Unfortunately, the S U P expiring just simply passed by me last December. And I apologize for that. We should have come in front of this governing body to, to renew the S U P before that. But we had some very good collaborative efforts with, with your staff, and if there are any questions, there are some work that we need to do still, and I'm very well aware of it, and we will pursue each and every one of them to the best of our capabilities. We have some level of limitation due to the conditions of the property, but in order to not to get your time too much, I and my lead architect, Mr. Scott James, who's on the meeting tonight, we will wait to see if there are any questions. Otherwise, we thank our staff and we thank you for your time. One more thing I wanted to mention is that the importance of, as you know, a state of Kansas now meets about twenty-eight percent of the required childcare capacity and, you know, licensed childcare capacity. So there is a huge gap. But we are also glad that we would be serving the upcoming hundred fifty million dollar cancer center, which is about four hundred feet from us. So I am glad that this program would go online with your help, God willing, with the capacity of about ninety kids in walking distance from the major comprehensive cancer center that would serve the great people of Kansas and Kansas City.
Okay, thank you very much. Any questions for the applicant? I am not seeing any. Is there anyone in the audience that wants to speak to this case in favor of or in opposition to? Please raise your hand or come to the microphone. Not seeing anyone there, so we'll go ahead and go to Director Han and get his comment on this case.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Gunnar Hand, Director of Planning and Urban Design. Again, this is an S U P for a daycare that, as the applicant noted, has yet to open. While this is a renewal, technically it is new S U P as the previous one expired last December, two thousand and twenty-two. This is in the Rosedale Area Plan. Staff has received no letters of support, no letters in opposition. There's an old N O V when it was vacant regards to burglary during the construction period. That's, so that's unrelated and should be resolved with an operating facility, so no issues there. Because it technically expired and because it has yet to operate, and we want to make sure there are no issues during operations, staff recommends approval for two years again.
All right, thank you. Any questions for staff?
I would just note that there were a lot of conditions on this case, and all of them have been met.
Yeah, it looks great. Any questions for staff? If not, I'll stand for a motion when ready. Excuse me, I've got Commissioner Jones.
Motion to approve special use case number two zero two-three dash zero four three, subject to staff stipulations and comments.
A motion made for approval by Commissioner Jones for two years. Is that a second, Commissioner Armstrong?
Yes, it is.
Thank you. Any discussion on the motion for approval? Seeing none, well, I'm sorry, wait a minute. Commissioner Armstrong, you don't, that's just your hand from before, is that correct? Got it. Thank you. Roll call, please, Janet.
Isles?
Aye.
Ernst?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Muller?
Aye.
Straws?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Armstrong?
Aye.
Beth?
Aye.
Connolly?
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, that motion to recommend approval of S P forty-three for two years, subject to the conditions in the staff report, passes ten in favor, none opposed.
Thank you, Dr. Parasati. This will be heard once again on August thirty-first at seven P M before the Board of County Commissioners.
Thank you very much, the board. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Bye bye.
Our next application is S P two thousand and twenty-three dash zero four six, Erin Lilly. Special use permit to operate a short-term rental at forty-one thirty-eight Lloyd Street. Please include the following items as part of the record for this case. The city's currently adopted zoning and subdivision regulations, the official zoning map for the area in question, the city's currently adopted master plan for the area in question, the staff report and attachments dated August fourteen, two thousand and twenty-three, the application and other documents, plans, pictures, and maps submitted by the applicant in furtherance of the case and contained in the official file, the notice in the wine dot echo, and the notices to property owners. Does any member of the Commission have any contact to disclose with regard to this case?
No.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lilly. I've got you ready to speak. If you would, please give us your name and address.
Yes, my name's Erin Lilly. My address is two zero six zero seven West Eighty-Eighth Street, Lenexa, Kansas, six-six-two-two-zero. And this request is for an approval of a special use permit to operate short-term rental. And then just to note that this is not my primary address and the, the, yeah, and the request is for a short-term rental.
Okay, and you're aware of the staff recommendations and everything that's required to get your approval, is that correct?
That's correct.
All right, and you're in agreement with all those conditions?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Any questions for the applicant? Okay, go ahead, Commissioner Isles.
Commissioner Isles, Mr. Lilly, so you live in Lenexa. How long does it take you to drive to the property?
So it only takes me about fifteen or twenty minutes to drive to the property from my, from my main location here in Lenexa. However, I do live five minutes from the rental property off Lloyd. I, I work downtown at the American Century Building there, so I am very close proximity to the rental property and manage it myself.
And you're aware that you ran it as an unpermitted short-term rental for at least a year?
Yes, that was my foresight. We were focused on getting the business up and operational. And until we were, received our notice, that's when we have been following the process with the Director of Planning and Urban Design.
And you currently don't have a business license either?
We did, we have an LLC.
A business license from the U G to operate in Y and Dot County?
We do not.
Okay, do you intend to get one?
Yes, we do.
And I saw that you allow pets. Do you have a fenced yard?
Yes, the backyard is fenced.
Okay, and is there a limit on the size and number of pets that you allow?
Only one, one pet per property.
Okay.
No, no, no size, no size limitation.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you. Other questions from the commission? Saying none, we'll go to the audience. Anyone in the audience want to speak to this case in favor of or in opposition to? Please raise your hand or come to the microphone. Saying none, we'll go to Director Hand and get his comment.
Thank you, Mr. Chair Gunner Hand, Director of Planning and Urban Design. Again, this is an SUP for a short-term rental. This is a non-owner occupied property. For those of you who have been on the commission for some time, you may recognize this property. It was formerly a short-term rental with an SUP. But there was a change of ownership which caused the recent issue and the need to come back before us. This is in the Rosedale area plan. Staff has received no letters of support, no letters in opposition. This one is operating with the notice of violation for having a short-term rental without an SUP. So again, this is another one that we think through our zoning blitz and other enforcement efforts. We've been able to bring them in from the cold, so to speak. But because it's sort of starting over, staff does recommend approval for just the one year to see how things go. With a maximum of six people at one time and two cars off-street and other conditions. I would also just note there is one other illegal, unpermitted, short-term rental on this block that we will then have to follow up with if this SUP moves forward tonight and at the Board of Commissioners later this month. But staff recommends.
All right, thank you. Any questions for staff?
One.
Commissioner Isles.
So, Mr. Hand, that means that you are following up with the, the other illegal one?
After each month at the Board of Commissioners, we come up with the list and then pursue those, yes.
Great, thanks.
Thank you. Any other questions for Director Hand? Saying none, I'll stand for a motion when ready.
Mr. Ward.
Mr. Ward, go ahead.
I move to approve a special use permit application two zero two-three dash zero four-six, subject to all the stipulations and comments from staff.
Thank you. Motion made by Commissioner Ward for approval. Is there a second, Commissioner Ernst?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Any discussion? Saying none, roll call, please.
Isles?
No.
Ernst?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Muller?
Aye.
Straws?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Armstrong?
Aye.
Beth?
Aye.
Conley?
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, that motion to recommend approval of SP forty-six for one year. Subject to the conditions in the staff report passes nine in favor and one opposed.
Thank you, Mr. Lilly. This will be heard once again on August thirty-first between, before the Board of County Commissioners.
Our next applic- our next application is special use permit SP twenty twenty-three dash zero four eight. Lance Pierce, special use permit to operate a short-term rental at thirty-nine twenty-five Springfield Street. Please include the following items as part of the record for this case. The city's currently adopted zoning and subdivision regulations. The official zoning map for the area in question. The city's currently adopted master plan for the area in question. The staff report and attachments dated August fourteen twenty twenty-three. The application and other documents, plans, pictures and maps submitted by the applicant. In furtherance of the case and contained in the official file. The notice in the Wyandotte Echo and the notices to property owners. Does any member of the commission have any contact to disclose with regard to this case?
No.
Thank you.
Mr. Pierce, are you representative? Are you in the audience? Is this Callie? Are you representing Mr. Pierce?
No, I'm just listening.
Okay, your hand is up, though.
Oh, I apologize. I didn't realize that.
Thank you. Mr. Pierce, are you in the audience? Lance Pierce? Okay, Janet, I'm assuming we're going to need to move case twenty twenty-three, forty-eight and forty-nine to the end of the agenda since I don't see Mr. Pierce, Mr. Pierce in the audience.
And also SP fifty.
All right, thank you. Yep, I turned the page yet, so we'll put those three at the end.
Okay, give me just a second to get to the next application. Okay, our, our next application is special use permit SP twenty twenty-three dash zero five one. Special use permit to operate a short-term rental at twenty-nine twenty-four Eaton Street. Please include the following items as part of the record for this case. The city's currently adopted zoning and subdivision regulations. The official zoning map for the area in question. The city's currently adopted master plan for the area in question. The staff report and attachments dated August fourteen twenty twenty-three. The application and other documents, plans, pictures and maps submitted by the applicant. In furtherance of the case and contained in the official file. The notice in the Wyandotte Echo and the notices to property owners. Does any member of the commission have any contact to disclose with regard to this case?
No. Thank you, Mr. Rosales. Are you, I've got you queued up, ready to speak. If you would, please give us your name and address.
Uh, yes, can you guys hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, uh, yes, my name is Ruben Rosales. I live at two nine two-four Eaton Street, Kansas City, Kansas, six-six one zero three. I'm requesting a short-term rental use permit to rent out my home while I travel for work. During the, during the week and sometimes during the weekends.
Okay, and are you familiar with the staff recommendations and requirements for you to receive your license?
Yes, yes, I have, I have looked over that. There was a few questions that I did have that I was hoping I could address here at this meeting and maybe get some clarification. But yes, I have reviewed them.
Okay, and are you in, I mean, are you good with those or?
Yes, yes, I am.
All right, so you just need some clarification from staff?
Yes, essentially, yes.
All right, thank you. Any questions for the applicant? Commissioner Isles?
It's Commissioner Isles. On page twenty of this application. It says, it's about the neighborhood meeting and apparently there was someone there named Rob Cummings who asked. Three questions and I didn't see the answers to those. The first question, I'm not sure I understand. It says driveway turning to slab. Don't know what that means. Uh, number two is who will oversee it while you're traveling? And what are the intentions for the short-term rental?
I, yes, so I guess one of the questions that, that I did have was, so I have gravel on my driveway. So the way that my driveway is angled, it makes it kind of difficult to kind of get out of, out of my driveway due to the fact that it's kind of at a curve. And on both sides I have a light post and then on the other side I have a, a drain. And so there's not a whole lot of room when it comes to having a vehicle not be on my grass or dirt. So during last year doing, when I was redoing the back slab on my back deck. I had some extra rock that I had put on the side there and my question was, was, and that was something that was kind of marked on my paperwork of. Getting those rocks removed. Now, I didn't know if there was a way that I could request to have my driveway extended. During this duration of time that I'm seeing to get a short-term rental permit use. And that was the question that they were asking as well.
All right, sure. I'm sorry, Director Hand, can you provide some clarification on this?
Gunner, Director of Planning and Urban Design. Gravel is an unimproved surface which you are not allowed to park on. So if the intent is to be more driveway, that needs to be an improved surface, which is either concrete, asphalt or landscape pavers is also an acceptable option. So I believe the condition of approval says remove it. But if you wanted to extend your driveway, we could do that too and amend condition number, I think it's three.
Yeah, I believe so, yes.
We could amend condition number three to just say improve, upgrade the driveway to an improved surface. Or, or you need to remove it.
Yeah, I guess if I wanted to improve it, is that something that, is that another permit that I would then need to do or could I do that while? I, I guess I'm fall- falling under this one here, I guess was my main question there.
Since you're only extending your driveway and there, it is flat work, you do not need a permit for that. You just need to do it or we will continue to cite for it.
Okay, okay, perfect. Um, and then the second question was, who would oversee my property while I was traveling for work? I have my sister as my first contact and then my best friend as my second, both who live less than seven minutes away from the property.
All right, anything else, Commissioner Isles? All right, thank you. Any other questions for the applicant? Seeing none, we'll go to the audience. Anyone in the audience want to speak to this case in favor or in opposition? Raise your hand or come to the microphone. Seeing no one, we'll go to Director Hand and get his comment.
Thank you, Mr. Chair Gunner Hand, Director of Planning and Urban Design. Excuse me, again, this is a special use permit for a short-term rental that is, that is owner occupied. But because they intend to rent it as a short-term rental when it is not occupied, this is not an administrative. Review as per the new short-term rental ordinance, it does require a special use permit. Staff, this, excuse me, this is also in the Rosedale area plan. Sorry, staff received no letters of support, no letters in opposition. There is an old, you know, notice of violation on the property as it relates to property maintenance. There is a condition to address that. Staff recommends approval for one year for a maximum of seven people. At one time, three cars off-street, which would be basically one in the garage and two on the driveway in the end. And with conditions including an amendment to number three as previously discussed to be an improved driveway surface. And to. Address the overgrown landscaping on the site as well.
All right, thank you. Any questions for Director Hand? Seeing none, I will stand for a motion when ready.
Mr. Ward.
Mr. Ward, go ahead.
Um, I move to approve a special use permit application two zero two-three dash zero five one with the chain, with the amendment to point number three.
Yes.
And also subject to staff stipulations and comments.
All right, thank you. Motion made for approval by Commissioner Ward with the stipulations made by Director Hand. Is that a second, Commissioner Ernst?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Isles?
Aye.
Ernst?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Miller? Commissioner Miller, I'm sorry. Muller?
Aye.
Straws?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Armstrong?
Aye.
Beth?
Aye.
Conley?
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, that motion to recommend approval of SP fifty-one for one year. Subject to the revised conditions in the staff report passes ten in favor, none opposed.
Thank you. This will be heard once again on August thirty-first at seven PM before the Board of Commissioners, Mr. Rosales.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to let you know that while that application was going on, I did call Lance Pierce. He was on, he has like five applications and he was under the impression that these were going to be held over with the other three. However, he is now on the meeting, so I don't know if you want to go back and pick these up now?
No, I'd like to just go ahead with the agenda the way we've got it and we'll pick up Mr. Pierce at the end.
Okay, the next application is special use permit SP twenty twenty-three dash zero five-two. Special use permit to operate a short-term rental at twenty-five oh four West Forty-seventh Avenue. Please include the following items as part of the record for this case. The city's currently adopted zoning and subdivision regulations. The official zoning map for the area in question. The city's currently adopted master plan for the area in question. The staff report and attachments dated August fourteen twenty twenty-three. The application and other documents, plans, pictures and maps submitted by the applicant. In furtherance of the case contained in the official file. The notice in the Wyandotte Echo and the notices to property owners. Does any member of the commission have any contact to disclose with regard to this application?
No.
And Janet, I've changed my mind. I want to put Mr. Pierce at the end of the special use permits.
Okay, sir, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Mr. Basilica, I, I think, I hope I'm saying it correctly. I've got you queued up, ready to speak. If you would, please give us your full name and address.
Thank you very much, everybody. My name is Andrew Basilica. The address for the property is two five zero four West Forty-seventh Avenue, Kansas City, Kansas, six-six one zero three. And I'm seeking a special use permit for a short-term rental for the property, please.
All right, and you're aware of the staff recommendations and requirements for you to get your special use permit, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Are you in agreement with those requests?
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you. Any questions for the applicant? Commissioner Isles?
This is Commissioner Isles. Mr. Basilica, where do you actually live?
I, I currently live in Nashville, Tennessee.
Okay, and who would be managing this for you?
I have a full-time property manager that I've engaged with who has other short-term rental properties in the area to manage it full-time.
And who is that?
Her name is Joyce Stamps with Manifest Properties.
And are you aware that you've been operating without a permit?
Yes, that was under the previous owner, when we were notified by the staff that we needed to stop the rental. When that ownership changed, we went ahead and did so.
You have a business license for Wyandotte County?
No, ma'am, but we intend to get one.
And let's see, fenced yard for pets?
Yes, ma'am.
You do have a fenced yard, okay. So this property management manifests whatever, so they didn't inform you that you needed a special use permit?
They, they were not with the property when I inherited it. I hired that, that property manager after the fact with the hopes that this would be allowed. So it is ready to go pending approval.
Thank you.
Any other questions for the applicant? Seeing none, we'll go to the audience. Anyone in the audience want to speak to this case in favor or in opposition? Yes, sir, please go ahead, come forward, give us your name and address, please.
My name is Jacob Hotson. I reside at forty-four forty-eight Francis. I am the president of the Spring Valley Neighborhood Association. While this is not in my neighborhood, it's about two blocks away. And I would urge you as a commission to take great caution in allowing people and companies coming in and purchasing our neighborhood homes and. And driving out the, the family and the kids that we used to have in the neighborhood and that's all.
All right, thank you very much. Anyone else want to speak to this case? Okay, seeing none, we'll go to Director Hand and get his comment.
Thank you, Mr. Chair Gunner Hand, Director of Planning and Urban Design. Again, this is a special use permit for a short-term rental. It's non-owner occupied. This is in the Rosedale area plan. Excuse me, staff received no letters of support, no letters in opposition. There are no notices of violation on the property. Staff recommends approval for one year to see how things go with a maximum of seven people on-site at one time and three, three cars off-street. As well as other conditions, staff would note there is unfortunately a typo in condition number eighteen, so we would ask by motion that it be amended to say it approval for one year, not two.
Okay, thank you. Gunner, as, with regard to the Spring Valley neighborhood. I'm assuming this one conforms with the one per street. Do we know where we're at in the Spring Valley neighborhood as far as numbers go?
A total number, I have to go look to see how many we have within that geographic boundary, but yes, this, this one would be the first and only one on this block of Forty-seventh Avenue.
All right, thank you. Other questions for Director Hand? Seeing none, I will stand for a motion when ready. Commissioner Jones?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve the petitioner's request subject to staff stipulation, stipulations and comments, inclusive of the amendment that Director Hand just made to the stipulations.
For one year, correct?
Correct, for one year.
Thank you. Is that a second, Commissioner Ernst?
Yes, sir.
All right, it's been moved and seconded for approval for one year from by Commissioner Jones. Is there any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Isles.
No.
Ernst.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Muller.
Aye.
Straws.
Aye.
Ward.
Aye.
Armstrong.
Aye.
Beth.
Aye.
Conley.
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, that motion to recommend approval of SP fifty-two for one year, subject to the conditions in the staff report passes nine in favor and one opposed.
Thank you, Mr. Basalika. This will be heard once again, August thirty-first at seven P M before the Board of County Commissioners. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next application is special use permit SP twenty twenty-three dash zero five-three. Elizabeth Harding, special use permit to operate a short term rental at twenty-eight twenty-two West Forty-third Avenue. Please include the following items as part of the record for this case. The city's currently adopted zoning and subdivision regulations, the official zoning map for the area in question, the city's currently adopted master plan for the area in question, the staff report and attachments dated August fourteen, twenty twenty-three, the application and other documents, plans, pictures and maps submitted by the applicant, in furtherance of the case and contained in the official file, the notice in the Wyandotte Echo and the notices to property owners. Does any member of the commission have any contact to disclose with regard to this case?
No.
Thank you.
Ms. Harding, I've got you ready to speak. If you would, please start off with your name and address.
Great, thank you. My name is Elizabeth Harding. The property is twenty-eight twenty-two West Forty-third Avenue, particularly Unit B. My personal residence is eighty-nine ten Delmar Street in Prairie Village, Kansas, which is approximately sixteen minutes away from the property. I am currently operating it as a midterm furnished rental, which is all stays over thirty days, mostly for medical patients and medical professionals. I'm looking for a short term special use permit to fill in gaps between these long-term tenants and meet needs of patients and medical professionals needing shorter stays for the one-bedroom unit in this duplex. I do prefer to do midterm rentals, so it will not primarily be a short term rental. My primary use will still be, uh, the over thirty days. I have a rental license, but will be seeking a business license. I have reviewed the staff report and recently sent the photos to Mr. Malloy, showing the work that has been done as requested and understand the other expectations. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Any questions for this applicant? Seeing, so. Commissioner Isles.
It, I don't think I saw the neighborhood meeting minutes.
There were no responses to my letters, so I don't know if they just left that part blank. I noticed that on the report as well, that it said that, but then there was nothing indicating that I didn't receive anything.
Thank you.
Any other questions for the applicant? Okay, seeing none, we'll go to the audience. Anyone in the audience want to speak to this case? Please come forward or raise your hand if you're online. Seeing no one, so we'll go to Director Hand and get his comment.
Our hand director of planning, urban design, um, apologize for the omission of the neighborhood and meetings. We'll get that in the staff report before the Board of Commissioners. Um, this is a special use permit for a short term rental, not owner occupied. Uh, again, for those of you who've been on the planning commission for some time, you might remember this one. Uh, there was a, uh, changes, uh, to turn this into a duplex about a year ago. Uh, before that, it was a severely distressed property, um, that got fixed up by the previous owner, excuse me. So again, the staff had received, this is also in the Rosedale area plan. Staff has received no letters of support, no letters in opposition. Again, there's some older notices of violation when this property was, uh, vacant, uh, that have all been resolved to date. Um, it's a limited, small, short term rental, small unit. So as such, um, staff recommends approval for one year, uh, with a maximum of three people at one time and one car off-site. And again, that path was designed to only hold two cars, one for each unit as required by the R two B zoning. Uh, so they only get one spot off-street. And then just as a point of clarification from something the applicant said before, this is a duplex, so one can be long-term, one can be short-term. You cannot have one of the units be both long-term and short-term. It's one or the other, and that is the new law in the ordinance. So I don't know if there's some confusion there because it's a duplex, but if one of the units stays as a long-term, that's fine. You have a rental license on that property. If this unit B becomes a short term rental, it cannot do both, short term and long term.
All right, and the applicant's aware of that?
They are now.
Okay, Ms. Harding, did you understand that?
So does that, does that mean every stay has to be under thirty days?
You cannot have a rental license and a short term rental approval for one, for more than one unit. So, yes.
So it's either or.
Either or. It's either a short term rental or it's a long term rental. Can't be both.
Okay.
All right. Okay, with that, with those, uh, stipulations, I will stand for, or excuse me, questions for Director Hand? Seeing none, oh, I'm sorry, I do see one, excuse me, Commissioner Straws.
I don't know that it's a question for Director Hand, but with the clarification of what he just said to the applicant is, she's still in agreement with going forward.
I am thrown off and I'm going to have to figure out what I'm going to do because that was not my understanding.
So if it's approved tonight, Gunner, does she still, I mean, she still has the option to apply for it or not, correct?
That's correct. Technically, you can go all the way through hypothetically, the Board of Commissioners. Um, a special use permit requires the final step before you can start renting on a new short term rental is to publish that, um, special use permit ordinance in the newspaper the month after that, or that typically happens the month after a board of commissioner approval. So that would be in September. She could go through the approvals and just not move forward with that publication if she decides she doesn't want to do it.
Correct, and she could withdraw the special use permit request prior to the.
Or she can withdraw between now and board commissioners if she makes that determination.
She has time to make, to be thrown back on.
Correct, right.
Ms. Harding, you understand?
I do understand. I just wanted to note that I, um, made sure to include in my application that my plan was not to do it the majority of the time, and I think that it wasn't really clear that I had to choose. I actually just wanted the short term as an option and, um, to be able to have different business options available in the future since there is a density requirement. Um, and I thought it would actually be a good thing for the neighborhood to mostly keep it longer term and then just do short term on occasion because I know that there's a lot of challenges in Rosedale, so, um, I will ponder.
I want to review your options with staff tomorrow.
Yeah.
And let, unless you want to, I mean, do you want to go forward tonight, one way or the other, and then you can review those options?
Um, yeah, I'll, I would like it to be a, like, go forward so I don't have to do this part again, and then I would like to review my options and just think about it since it's new information for me.
Okay, well, I hope it's because I wasn't too hard on you that you want to come back and see me, but, but I understand.
It wasn't a bad process. I just, I, I have a lot of transplant patients, um, and so.
We understand.
Be able to do both, yeah.
All right, glad, glad that you're getting some clarification though, before we were to make a wrong decision for you.
And, yeah.
Okay, so any other questions for Director Hand? Seeing none, with the applicant's indication that she wants to move forward, I will stand for a motion when ready. Commissioner Jones.
Motion to approve the applicant's request, uh, subject to staff stipulations and comments.
All right, thank you. Motion for approval made by Commissioner Jones, is there a second? Commissioner Ernst, is that a second from you?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Isles.
Aye.
Ernst.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Muller.
Aye.
Straws.
Aye.
Ward.
Aye.
Armstrong.
Aye.
Beth.
Aye.
Conley.
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, that motion to recommend approval of SP fifty-three for one year, subject to the conditions in the staff report passes ten in favor and none opposed.
All right, thank you. Uh, Ms. Harding, this will be heard once again, August thirty-first at seven P M before the Board of Commissioners. I would just urge you to get with staff to examine your options and, uh, good luck to you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next application is special use permit SP twenty twenty-three dash zero five-four. Ashley Civils, special use permit to operate a short term rental at seven nineteen Lyons Avenue. Please include the following items as part of the record for this case. The city's currently adopted zoning and subdivision regulations, the official zoning map for the area in question, the city's currently adopted master plan for the area in question, the staff report and attachment stated August fourteen, twenty twenty-three, the application and other documents, plans, pictures and maps submitted by the applicant, in furtherance of the case and contained in the official file, the notice in the Wyandotte Echo and the notices to property owners. Does any member of the commission have any contact to disclose with regard to this case?
No.
Thank you.
Yes, uh, Ms. Sevills?
Yes.
Yes, I've got you queued up, ready to speak. If you would, please go ahead and correct the pronunciation of your name and give us your address.
Okay, great. My name is Ashley Sevills. My address is four two five Washington Street, apartment two oh seven, Kansas City, Missouri, six four one zero five. And I am requesting a special use permit for a short term rental at seven one nine Lyon Avenue.
And tell us what you'd like to do.
Oh, uh, for short term rentals, special use permit.
All right, and have you reviewed the staff report? You're fa- uh, familiar with all the restrictions and and what's going to take to, to, uh, get your permit?
Yes, I have, and I am in agreeance with all of it.
Okay. And you're okay with the off-street parking and will be.
I am.
And you'll be clear about that in posting in your, in your ads, correct?
Correct.
All right, great, thank you. Any questions for the applicant? Okay, Commissioner Isles.
This is Commissioner Isles. So, Ms. Sevills, um, how long have you owned the property?
I bought the house in twenty twenty-one.
And you've been operating it as a short term rental without a permit since then, is that correct?
Correct, and that is my fault, and I take full responsibility for that. Um, once I got notice that I needed a permit, I immediately called the city and put in my application.
And stopped renting?
Yes.
Uh, let's see, I had another question.
Anything else?
Well, it says in, on, uh, page six, number one, that you continued to operate despite being told to cease operation until the proper permits have been obtained.
Okay, um, I'm not sure about that because once I got my letter, I made sure to follow all of the rules.
And do you own some other short term rentals?
I do, but those have been turned to over thirty days or more, so this would be my only one.
Do you have a license, uh, to operate a business in Wyandotte County?
I do not, but I am aware that I need one and I am, uh, in the process of getting that.
Thank you.
Mr. Ernst.
I just want to make sure I understand. So you had other rentals, and when you were told that you couldn't short term rent them anymore, you turned them into long term rentals. But when you did this one, you didn't know you needed a permit?
So I got letters on all of my houses that I couldn't do short term rental around the same time. So when I got those letters, I called the city and asked them about each address. And, um, this is the only one that could be a short term rental. So I went ahead with the application on this one, and then the other ones are mid to long term rental only.
That's a fine answer, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions for the applicant? Okay, seeing none, we'll go to the public. Anyone want to speak to this case in favor or in opposition? Please come forward. I'm seeing no one, so we'll go to Director Hand and get his comment.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, our hand director of planning, urban design, again, this is a short term rental, uh, uh, special use permit for non-owner occupied. Um, as noted in the discussion, it had been operating without a short, without a special use permit for over two years. This is in the central area plan. Staff received no support, no letters in support, no letters in opposition. There's lots, there's quite a long history of notices of violation on this property from when it was, uh, before it was rehabilitated. There's been a couple since then, um, uh, related trash on the, uh, left outside and things of that nature. So, um, again, I think those can be addressed through the active use of the property. Um, I did want to point out one thing, which you can't really see in this picture. But let me just try here. So this property only has access for off-street parking via the alley. The alley is an L alley because it doesn't go through the commercial block at the end of the street. This technically is an alley, is the alley that I'm pretty sure this property owner uses as their driveway, effectively blocking the alley. Um, and so the other access to the alley is up the hill and and, uh, on the back end, and you have to come down the alleyway. Now, it's one of those older alleyways. It's mostly brick. It does have a little bit of overgrowth on it. Um, and it is a relatively steep incline to and from this property to get to that off-street access. I want to make it clear that you can't park on the street in front of this house. You have to get your tenants to park in the back. And there are some conditions of approval related to helping us clear out that alleyway a little bit. I only note that in another case that we had, where there was another access to the off-street parking via an unimproved alley, um, we had some issues with that one, so I wanted to be abundantly clear about the potential access issues to the off-street parking for this one. Uh, it's doable, but it requires a little bit of work and probably a lot of, uh, conversations with, uh, future tenants if, if this doesn't afford a short term rental. So with that, staff does recommend approval for one year with a maximum of seven people at one time, two off-street parking spaces, because that's all they have in the rear. Um, again, there's some conditions in there about, um, helping improve the access to the alleyways. And then staff will work with our, um, uh, community policing on the gentleman who's parking in the other alleyway, uh, illegally, so we'll try to get that one cleared up. That's on us to figure out, so I just wanted to point those two out.
All right, any questions for Director Hand? Seeing none, I'll stand for a motion. Commissioner Jones.
Motion to approve the petitioner's request, subject to staff stipulations, comments and cautions.
Thank you. I like that. Motion made for approval and cautions by Commissioner Jones, is there a second? Commissioner Ernst.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Isles.
No.
Ernst.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Muller.
Aye.
Straws.
Aye.
Ward.
Aye.
Armstrong.
Aye.
Beth.
Aye.
Conley.
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, that motion to recommend approval of SP fifty-four for one year, subject to staff's conditions, passes nine in favor and one opposed.
Thank you. Sevills, this will be heard once again on August thirty-first at seven P M before the Board of County Commissioners. Thank you.
Okay, thank you so much.
Our next application is special use permit SP twenty twenty-three dash zero five-six. Caleb and Madison Bersunis, special use permit to operate a short term rental at forty-two oh six Mission Road. Please include the following items as part of the record for this case. The city's currently adopted zoning and subdivision regulations, the official zoning map for the area in question, the city's currently adopted master plan for the area in question, the staff report and attachments dated August fourteen, twenty twenty-three, the application and other documents, plans, pictures and maps submitted by the applicant, in furtherance of the case and contained in the official file, the notice in the Wyandotte Echo and the notices to property owners. Does any member of the commission have any contact to disclose on this application? Does any member of the commission have any contact disclosed on this application?
No.
Thank you.
Ms. Bersunus, I've got you queued up ready to speak. If you would, please start off with your name and address. Tell us what you'd like to do.
Yes, this is Madison Burchunus, and the property address is forty two oh six Mission Road. My primary residence, though, is ninety eight oh nine Winslow Place in Kansas City, Missouri. It's about a twenty minute drive to the property. We're applying for a short term rental special use permit. I have read through all the staff comments. I'm in agreement with all of them. We had about twenty five or so. Items of things to repair according to our inspection report, and all those will be completed by the end of this week with the exception of the driveway and the sidewalk. As we were told, we had a bit of time before we had to do that one, but I do have a bid for it, so it'll get. It'll get done in the time allotted. And we will be applying for a business license upon approval.
Okay, great. So you're and you're in agreement with all the restrictions and conditions of your permit, correct?
That's right.
All right, great. Thank you. Any questions for the applicant? Seeing none, we'll go to the audience. Anyone in the audience want to speak to this case in favor or in opposition? Please raise your hand or come to the mic. Seeing none, we'll go to Director Han to get his comment.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Director Planer resign. Again, we have a special use permit for a short term rental. It's non owner occupied. This is in the Rosedale area plan. Excuse me, this is in the Rosedale area plan. We received no letters of support, no letters of opposition. There are some older notices violation related to maintenance on the property, which would should be addressed through the. Uh, work that needs to be done on the property for this approval. Staff recommends approval for one year with a maximum of six people on onsite at one time and two off street. Parking, that's one in the garage and one in the driveway. There are conditions related to finishing those repairs as noted by the applicant and the sidewalk work as well as other conditions.
Thank you. Any questions for Director Hand? Seeing none, I'll stand for a motion. Commissioner Jones.
Notice to motion to approve the applicant's request subject to staff stipulations and comments for one year.
Thank you. Motion for approval made by Commissioner Jones for one year. Is there a second? Commissioner Ernst.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call.
Isles.
Aye.
Ernst.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Muller.
Aye.
Straws.
Aye.
Ward.
Aye.
Armstrong.
Aye.
Beth.
Aye.
Conley.
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, that motion to recommend approval of S P fifty six for one year. Subject to the conditions in the staff report passes ten in favor, none opposed.
Thank you. This will be heard once again on August thirty first at seven P M before the Board of County Commissioners. Good luck.
Mr. Chairman, as per your direction, we will go back to the three applications for Mr. Pierce. And the first one is special use permit application. S P two zero two three dash zero four eight Lance Pierce. Special use permit to operate a short term rental at thirty nine twenty five Springfield Street. Please include the following items as part of the record for this case. The city's currently adopted zoning and subdivision regulations. The official zoning map for the area in question. The city's currently adopted master plan for the area in question. The staff report and attachments dated August fourteen twenty twenty three. The application and other documents, plans, pictures and maps submitted by the applicant. In furtherance of the case and contained in the official file. The notice in the wine dot echo and the notices to property owners. Does any member of the commission have any contact to disclose on this case?
No.
Thank you.
Hey, Mr. Pierce, we have you ready to speak. If you would, please start off with your name and address and tell us what you'd like to do with Springfield property.
My name is Lance Pierce. My address is thirty nine seventeen Bell Street in Kansas City, Missouri. And we're looking to create a short term rental out of thirty nine twenty five.
And you're not the owner of that property, is that correct?
Yes, I am the owner of that property.
You are, okay. All right. And you're aware of the staff stipulations and requirements in order for you to get your special use permit?
Yes.
And you're in agreement with those?
Yeah, I think we can get them all achieved. Oh, most of them already are.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for this for this applicant? Sorry, I've got. Commissioner Ernst.
Uh, yes, sir. You have three items. I'm going to try to cover them all. Under one heading to save a little time.
Okay.
You operated without a permit. On this one, on the second one, on the third one. Why you used a different reason for each one? But how does issuing you permits now help you keep in line down the road? I just, I'm not clear.
Yeah, I manage, I have Airbnbs in Kansas City, Missouri, and have kind of worked with the city council to pass the legislation there. And then, I mean, honestly. We were just overwhelmed with the process. And that's really not an excuse. Two of the properties that are on the docket today, we've really only rented for midterm stays, so for thirty days or more. So mostly for recovering patients of K U Med Center. And then we've rented like the the week gap or the two week gap that we have between reservations as short term. And so we're kind of trying to get everything. I mean, honestly, we're just a, we're just trying to get everything all legal and figure it out how it all works to make sure that we're, we've got it set up correctly.
You answered the question.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Isles.
Uh, do you have business licenses for each of these? Short term rentals?
Do, we've got a business license in K C K for the LLC, but. Do we need a business license for each individual property?
Uh, Gunner, Director Hand shaking his head no, so I guess one is enough. I was also going to ask you about the. Why you've been operating it since August of twenty twenty two as a unpermitted short term rental?
It's been answered.
Hmm hmm. And I think that's my questions for that one. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Jones.
So how many properties do you have altogether on the Kansas and the Missouri side?
Um, I have about sixty total. And we've.
Are you asking for how many he owns or how many manages, Commissioner Jones? Or both?
Both if it's different.
Okay.
Yeah, I own about thirty and I manage about sixty, and we do a variety of short term rentals, medium term rentals. And so we help other people manage as well, so trying to get everything, getting everybody all organized and pulled together. So we've got the Missouri side taken care of, and we're getting the whole Kansas side taken care of.
Okay, because because the concern I think is you mentioned being overwhelmed. That was your word. And then there was even confusion about you being on this meeting, so just to be candid with you, you're giving the impression that. Um, you can't keep up. So going forward, one of the things that we want to see with short term rentals is good property management and manageability. So do you have provisions in place to take care of that going forward?
Yeah, we do. And that was some of the feedback that we heard in the neighborhood meeting. Two of the people that showed up had said they're just opposed to it like ideologically. And then we did have someone show up and say. If we are going to have a short term rental operator in our community, we want Lance to be the one because all the properties that we've, you know, bought here, we've completely rehabbed. We have a professional lawn company that comes. We have staff that's there every week either to pull the garbage from the curb, even if it's a medium term rental. Things are fully inspected between guests. You know, you just can't, there's a lot of operators that when they scale, they don't put the right processes in place. And I come from a long line of corporate world where we just have lots of strict plans and processes and and kind of documentation in place. And and that's how we've been able to be successful. So, yeah, I mean, the, this process has been just a. Just trying to figure out how it all works and how it's different from the Kansas City, Missouri process that we've that we've participated in.
So at this point, then you do understand all the stipulations, and I think the chair may have mentioned that at the beginning like he's been doing, but you you understand all the stipulations.
Yep, that is correct. The one thing I did learn was that you can't do necessarily long term and short term. You have to do one or the other, which I just learned in this meeting, but yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Other questions? Seeing none, we'll go to the audience. Anyone want to speak to this case in favor or in opposition? Come forward or raise your hand if you're online. Seeing none, we'll go to Director Hand and get his comment on this case.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Director Planer resign. Again, this is another S U P for special use permit for a short term rental, non owner occupied. It would be the first and only on this block of Springfield. This is, excuse me, this is in the Rosedale area plan. Neighborhood staff has received no letters of support, no letters of opposition. There are no notices of violation on this property. Staff, excuse me, staff recommends approval for one year with a maximum of seven people at one time and two cars off street. I would note to the applicant that we could change that to three. It looks like your driveway is long enough to acquire, to allow three, but I don't know if it's changed anytime soon. So it says two now, and I'll open that up for them if they have any issues. Again, we are asking for sidewalk repairs to be done at this location. Let me show you. Yes, he's already done it, and he's already fixed up the sidewalk quite nicely. So sidewalk repairs as well as a. Repair of the driveway apron at this location as well as other conditions.
All right, thank you. Questions for Director Hand? Mr. Jones.
Real quickly, so Gunner, since this applicant has so many properties, and our hope, of course, is that the everything goes well. Is there connectivity in the database when we have. Um, a property owner for this many or any number of multiple short term rentals? Is there any connectivity that things are either all going well totally versus not going well?
I mean, we keep, Gunner Hand, Director Planer resign, staff completes a list of all special use permits, specifically short term rentals as well as a subset of those lists. So we have the information, but. I think that that would be something we would want to track when we come back to you all as planned next May for a report on this ordinance is. The difference between dealing with a one off, a small scale. Or what Mr. Pierce here is, which is scaling. I don't know if it's necessarily large. There's some short term rental operators that own thousands of properties, right? So he's somewhere in the middle probably, but certainly larger than we've ever experienced thus far in Kansas City, Kansas. So I think that's something we should track for the report, and we can do that.
I agree. Thank you, Gunner.
Thank you. Any other questions for Director Hand? Seeing none, I'll stand for a motion when ready. Commissioner Jones.
Motion to approve the applicant's request subject to staff stipulations and comments for one year.
Thank you. Motion for approval for one year made by Commissioner Jones. Is it a second, Commissioner Connolly?
That's the second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Seeing none. Commissioner Connolly, did you have another question? Nope, there we go. Seeing none, roll call, please.
I, excuse me, Isles.
No.
Ernst.
Nay.
Jones.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Muller.
Aye.
Straws.
Aye.
Ward.
Aye.
Armstrong.
Aye.
Beth.
Aye.
Conley.
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, that motion to recommend approval of S P forty eight for one year, subject to the conditions in the staff report passes eight in favor and two opposed.
Thank you. This case will be heard once again August thirty first, seven P M.
The next application is special use permit S P two zero two three dash zero four nine Lance Pierce. Special use permit to operate a short term rental at forty twenty eight Booth Street. Please include the following items as part of the record for this case. The city's currently adopted zoning and subdivision regulations. The official zoning map for the area in question. The city's currently adopted master plan for the area in question. The staff report and attachments dated August fourteen twenty twenty three. The application and other documents, plans, pictures and maps submitted by the applicant. In furtherance of the case and contained in the official file. The notice in the wine dot echo and the notices to property owners. Does any member of the commission have any contact to disclose on this case?
No.
Thank you.
Mr. Pierce, we got to start all over again. Name and address, please, and tell us about this one.
Uh, this is, my name is Lance Pierce, and the address is thirty nine seventeen Bell Street, Kansas City, Missouri. This is forty twenty booth street. It's a, it's a two level duplex. It was previously licensed, and then we let it lapse again because we were just overwhelmed by the new process. And. That's pretty much it. It's got parking in the front, and then we've since cleared out all the brush in the back where an old garage used to be and moved that into parking as well.
Thank you. Is this one that you own or or just manage?
This is one that I own.
You own, okay. All right, and you're again familiar with all the requirements and and that that are required for you to get your permit, correct?
Uh, yes, we've got a couple of questions about the curbs that we need to replace, but we can just follow up with city staff on that.
All right, you'll work with the planning staff on that, but you're you're in agreement with everything?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Any questions for the applicant on this one? Okay, Commissioner Straws first, then we'll go to Commissioner Isles. Go ahead, Commissioner Straws.
Just one quick question and suggestion for this particular applicant, since he is managing so many properties. To come up with a system of tracking so that he is not lapsing. Uh, because this body will be unforgiving if he continues to do that.
So, Mr. Pierce, do you have a system for tracking these permits so that they don't lapse?
Yes, we, yeah, we have a whole system now that we've put in place.
Okay. Commissioner Isles.
Um, on this, this Commissioner Isles, on this. One, you said. You allow pets. Do you have a fenced yard?
Yes, so when you're looking at the property to the right is a fenced in area. It was just completed as a part of the other work that we were doing in compliance with this. We went ahead and had them put up an area that's fenced in so that the dogs can be contained.
Have all of the repairs been accomplished?
Not all of them.
For what was found in the mechanical inspection?
Uh, not all of them, but most of them are or they're scheduled to be completed.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Saying none, we'll go to the audience. Anyone want to speak to this case? Please come forward or raise your hand if you're online. Seeing none, we'll go to Director Hand.
Gunner Hand, Director Planning, again, short term rental for special use permit, not owner occupied. Uh, this again had a previous S U P, but as was noted, it did lapse. And so here we are. This is in the Rosedale area plan. Staff received no, no letters of support, no letters of opposition. There are also no older notices of violation which should be addressed by the improvements to the property. Staff recommends approval for one year with maximum of seven people. Uh, at one time, three off street parking units, and as noted, some repairs to the curbs. Let me see if I can look at this. So there's two things here. Again, if this one does move forward tonight at the Board of Commissioners, we have another unpermitted special use permit down the street that we got to address. But there's two places to park, and you can kind of see it in this picture, right? So there's this parking lot off of, I believe that is.
Uh, booth street.
Of booth, yep, sorry, off booth. Uh, and then there's another one kind of back here off forty, is it forty first, I believe?
Forty first.
Forty first Avenue, yes. So the one on booth has an asphalt driveway apron, and it needs a concrete driveway apron. That's one thing. The one in the rear back there is gravel, and you can't park on an improved surface. Because the forty first also has a curb, that one needs to be a driveway apron of concrete, but the rest of that. Parking pad, if you will, could be asphalt similar to how you have it over here. The other issue you have is there is in need of a retaining wall because the height of the great changes greater. The code requires a whole, you got to do a whole engineering design of of that, of that retaining wall. So there's a couple in there about fixing this. You gotta do a whole engineering design of of that of that retaining wall. So there's a couple in there about fixing this with a retaining wall, filling it in and then mixing uh. Improving the surfaces to U G standards for the two different driveways. So again, you can reach out to staff um, to get a little bit more detail about those, but that's the skinny. Quick event. But staff again does work.
All right, thank you. Any questions for staff? Commissioner Isles?
Um. So Director Hand, who actually follows up? And tracks whether they rent prior to completion of all the repairs? Is it seems like they still have a lot to do?
So again, they have six months to meet all the conditions of approval. Um, what we tried to hold them to, and we do this the best we can with the limited enforcement staff that we do have. Um, we tried to hold them to not move forward with any rentals before. Uh, that publication in the in the newspaper, which happens after the S U P has been approved. So. We pretty much track it to that and then we basically default to the renewal process to come back and see if they met those conditions of approval.
Okay, so just to make sure I understand. So they're not supposed to rent until it's been published. And it doesn't get published until all the repairs are completed.
That's incorrect. So.
Okay.
It's not available to to be put on a platform. Um, until the S U P is approved. The S U P is not approved until it is published in the newspaper. So that's not the Board of Commissioners hearing, which is a common misconception. It's it's whenever you get the publication in. Um, and there's a little bit of grace there because it gets published and then it goes in the newspaper the week later and so on and so forth. The truth is, is most of that is tracked by the neighborhood. We've got multiple folks who have been watching these cases and they've let us know that an applicant is renting when they shouldn't and that's. The best way for us to follow up on, otherwise uh, it's a manpower issue.
Okay, so once it's been. Published in the wine dot county echo or whatever it is, then they can. Start renting it again.
Correct.
And in a perfect world, they would have all the repairs done before they start renting it, but. The only people watching them are the neighbors.
Um, they have six months to do all the conditions of approval.
Hmm, okay.
Uh, and what we what we've been doing with special use permits, because we're still trying to figure out a way to get our zoning enforcement staff to enforce other conditions of approval that. Uh, for cases that don't need renewals like special use permits. So we, there's a whole other issue. Um. So the best opportunity for us to catch it is when this comes back for renewal, if there are any of those conditions that are not met. And they said they were going to meet them and they had six months to meet them and they didn't meet them. Staff automatically recommends denial. We've gotten uh, a couple of folks who. Have been told that at that pre-application for the renewal. And very quickly rushed to get those things fixed before it went to hearing and asked us to hold them until that hearing. So there's. There's a couple of ways we can skin that cat to get those conditions approved, but um, that's how we've been handling it.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Yeah.
Commissioner Beth?
Yeah, yeah, I'm. The um. Staff recommendation is number ones. Says that that only one unit in the duplex can be rented as a short term rental. Is this was this explained as part of the provisions to to? To the owner? When he applied for this or is this something like he just said, he just learned tonight? So were these recommendations for approval? Has he made aware of that?
So. It was our understanding from the applicant that the only one of these units wanted to be a short term rental. So. Um, if it was not clarified, which it sounds like it wasn't, there is that one provision in the code that requires them to not be both. Um, so again, there's two units here. So the other unit. Can be a long term rental of which you need a rental license and this one is a business short term rental. So um, it requires business license.
Yeah, as long as he's clarified in that and and that uh. Things are not interchangeable.
Yeah, and it sounds like again, that's something that we can do a better job of with our preapplications moving forward as well.
Thank you. Any other questions? Seeing none, I'll stand for motion. Commissioner Jones?
Motion to approve the applicant's request subject to staff stipulations and comments uh, for one year. Uh, and uh, cautioning on the stipulation that the repairs need to be completed prior to. The start of any rental.
All right, thank you. Motion made for approval by Commissioner Jones. Is there a second?
Just just point of clarification. Again, they have six months to meet all conditions of approval.
And they can operate during that six month period?
Correct.
All right. Thank you. Motion is made for approval for one year by Commissioner Jones. Is there a second? Commissioner Straws?
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion?
I do have one more question.
Can I go ahead?
So uh, Director Hand on pages sixteen and seventeen. You know, he's drawn the. Diagram. Of the first floor and the second floor, but this is a duplex. So these are two separate units. So where he says in his uh, description. You know, four beds. That's not correct, is it?
Gunner Hand Director of Planning resign. I believe that is why we clarified in the condition that this was for one of the units.
Okay.
Yeah.
Just wanted to make sure he understood that.
Okay, further discussion on the motion for approval? Seeing none, roll call?
Isles?
No.
Ernst?
Nay.
Jones?
I.
Miller?
I.
Moller?
I.
Straws?
I.
Ward?
I.
Armstrong?
I.
Beth?
I.
Conley?
I.
Mr. Chairman, that motion to recommend approval of SP forty nine for one year, subject to the conditions in the staff report passes eight in favor and two opposed.
Thank you. This one will be heard also August thirty first, seven P M before the Board of Commissioners.
Our next application is special use permit SP twenty twenty three dash zero five zero. Lance Pierce, special use permit to operate a short term rental at forty four fifty six Springfield Street. Please include the following items as part of the record for this case. The city's currently adopted zoning and subdivision regulations, the official zoning map for the area in question. The city's currently adopted master plan for the area in question. The staff report and attachments dated August fourteen, twenty twenty three. The application and other documents, plans, pictures and maps submitted by the applicant. In furtherance of the case and contained in the official file. The notice in the wine dot echo and the notices to property owners. Does any member of the commission have any contact to disclose with regard to this case?
No.
No.
Thank you.
Hey, Mr. Pierce, one more time. Name and address and tell us about this one.
Uh, my name is Lance Pierce, address thirty nine seventeen Bell Street, Kansas City, Missouri, six four one one one. Um, this is forty four fifty six Springfield. Um, it's a one bedroom, um, and we're seeking a short term rental special use permit.
All right. And you're again aware of all the requirements and restrictions uh, and conditions for approval?
Yes.
All right, and you're in agreement with those?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Any uh, questions for the applicant? Commissioner Isles?
Commissioner Isles, so again, it looks like you've been continuing to rent it without a permit. Is that true?
Um, it's listed for thirty plus days. This one we, I mean, almost always because it's a smaller unit, we really just rent it out for thirty plus days, but. We've stopped renting it for the gaps between.
And you understand that if you do get this short term rental special use permit, that's the only. Use you'll be able to do.
Yes, and we'll transition it to that at that time.
And I believe it has uh, or you allow pets. Do you have a fenced yard?
Yes, it's a fully fenced yard. Um, there's even a gate that goes over the driveway to fence in the whole backyard.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the commission? Seeing none, anyone in the audience want to speak to this case? Come forward. Or raise your hand if you're online. Seeing none, Director Hand?
Thank you, Mr. Chair Gunner Hand Director of Planning resign. Excuse me, uh, another special use permit for a short term rental non owner occupied. This one is also in the Rosedale area plan. Staff has received no letters of support, no letters in opposition. There's an old notice of violation for maintenance that has been uh, addressed. Um, and or has been rectified, I should say. Um. Staff recommends approval for one year with a maximum of six people, uh. Six guests at one time and two off street parking spaces. We had a conversation about this case before um, previously. Um, and we forgot to add in uh, the condition we had previously talked about. So. By motion, staff would request that the planning commission add a condition that the uh, there's a standard condition for U G driveways driveway aprons. So. Very similar to the previous case, there are curbs on this on sprint uh, on this block of Springfield. Uh, so require a concrete driveway apron and then the rest of the driveway can be paved with some other improved surface, be concrete, asphalt and or. Havers. Um, you can see that on improved driveway in the picture here. Um. But with that, staff recommends approval with other conditions.
All right, thank you. Uh, Gunner, this is a one bedroom, right?
I believe so, yes.
So the numbers still six and two?
Yes.
Okay. Any questions for Director Hand? Seeing none, I'll stand for motion when ready. Commissioner Jones?
Motion to approve the applicant's request subject to staff stipulations and comments, including one that Director Hand just added. Uh, for the concrete driveway apron to be added.
All right, thank you. Motion made for approval by Commissioner Jones with the added stipulation made by uh, Director Hand. Is there a second? Second, uh, got a second from Commissioner Ward. Uh, any discussion? Seeing none, roll call.
Isles?
No.
Ernst?
Nay.
Jones?
I.
Miller?
I.
Moller?
I.
Straws?
I.
Ward?
I.
Armstrong?
I.
Beth?
I.
Conley?
I.
Mr. Chairman, that motion to recommend approval of SP fifty for one year, subject to the revised conditions in the staff report passes eight in favor and two opposed.
Thank you. This will be heard once again on August thirty first at seven P M before the Board of Commissioners. Just checking in on Commissioner Miller. You doing okay?
Yes.
Okay, you you keep up that enthusiasm, sir.
Always great.
Okay, Janet, go ahead.
Our next application is Platte. Twenty twenty three dash zero two zero, Austin Thompson. Preliminary and final plan for two single family lots at forty one eleven North ninety seventh street. Please include the following items as part of the record for this case. The city's currently adopted zoning and subdivision regulations, the official zoning map for the area in question. The city's currently adopted master plan for the area in question. The staff report and attachment stated August fourteen, twenty twenty three. The application and other documents, plans, pictures and maps submitted by the applicant in furtherance of the case and contained in the official file. The notices to property owners and the testimony at the Board of Zoning Appeals meeting earlier this evening. Does any member of the commission have any contact to disclose with regard to this case?
No.
Thank you.
Hey, Mr. Thompson, you are on.
Uh, good evening, everyone. My name is Austin Thompson and I'm with Atlas Lane Consulting fourteen five hundred. Parallel Road, Unit R, Baser, Kansas, six six zero zero seven. And what our client is looking to do is split off a five acre tract from a larger twenty three acre tract and um. Simply be able to possibly um, build a home on that five acre tract someday. And if you guys have any questions or concerns, just uh, feel free to ask.
All right, thank you. Any questions for the applicant? Seeing none, anyone in the audience want to speak to this case in favor and opposition? Please come forward. Seeing none, we'll go to Director Hand.
Thank you, Mr. Chair Gunner Hand Director of Planning resign. Again, this case is being heard in conjunction with Boza twenty twenty three zero two four that the Board of Zoning Appeals approved earlier this evening for two residential parcels from one. This is in the current Delaware Piper area plan. Staff has received no letters in support, no letters in opposition. Again, there's an old notice of violation related to maintenance, which has since been resolved. Staff recommends approval with conditions.
Thank you. Any questions for Director Hand? Seeing none, I'll stand for a motion. Sorry, Commissioner Jones?
Motion to approve the applicant's request subject to staff stipulations and comments.
Thank you. Motion made for approval by Commissioner Jones. Is that a second, Commissioner Ernst?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Moved and segmented for approval. Any discussion? Seeing none. Roll call.
Isles?
I.
Ernst?
I.
Jones?
I.
Miller?
I.
Moller?
I.
Straws?
I.
Ward?
I.
Armstrong?
I.
Beth?
I.
Conley?
I.
Mr. Chairman, that motion to approve Platte twenty, subject to the conditions in the staff report passes ten in favor and none opposed.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, that now takes us to our plan review applications. The first one is P R twenty twenty three dash zero one four. Cody Busick with Vineyard Church of Piper. Preliminary plan reviewed to expand an existing church at one zero six zero one Hutton Road. Please include the following items as part of the record for this case. The city's currently adopted zoning and subdivision regulations. The official zoning map for the area in question. The city's currently adopted master plan for the area in question. The staff report and attachments dated August fourteen, twenty twenty three. The application and other documents, plans, pictures and maps submitted by the applicant in furtherance of the case and contained in the official file. And the notices to property owners. Does any member of the commission have any contact to disclose with regard to this case?
No.
No.
Thank you.
Is the applicant here tonight? Here we go. Thank you. Your name and address, please.
My name is Jacob Hudson. I'm with Olson. I reside at forty four forty eight Francis Street and I'm a consultant for the Vineyard Church and the lead pastor.
Thank you. Go ahead and tell us what you'd like to do.
Before you today, Mr. Chair, is a preliminary development plan for a one thousand or seven thousand six hundred and fifty square foot addition. Of a multi purpose room to the rural church in Piper, the Vineyard Church. With that addition, we will also do driveway improvements and stormwater improvements with the church. Um. I would like to introduce the lead pastor Cody here to uh, tell you a little bit about the church and its mission and the neighborhood.
Great, thank you. Go ahead. Please give us your name and address, please.
Okay, Cody Busick, four five one four North one twenty second street. And uh, so we're small local church. Uh, our biggest efforts are put in put into serving uh, the kids and uh, the youth of the community and families. Uh, so uh, what we found in the last several years is as we've done that is that. Uh, this church building built in nineteen seventy three uh, isn't really built uh, to handle all the different ways that we serve the community. So that's why we're looking to um, do a multi purpose play so we can uh, continue to host uh, sports teams for Piper High School and. Uh, host uh, Boys and Girl Scouts uh, people there and the grad night committees and all those things. We do those things for the community on a regular basis. So. Uh, we're not able to do a lot of them during uh. Uh, when the weather isn't is agreeable. Uh, for instance, in the fall, we do a fifth quarter after the Piper High School football games. Uh, so we provide a safe place for the uh, high school students to come and spend a time instead of going to other places. And so uh, we're trying to provide room for um, children and families to um, be able to use our facilities, reach out to the community. And other times of the year and also more space for us to gather.
Good, thank you very much. Is that, are you done with your presentation?
We are done with our initial presentation. We do have some requests of the commission. We can get there. I can bring them up now.
Why don't you go ahead and bring them up and we'll talk about.
So staff report number two. So staff report number two. We would are asking for a deviation to this. We agree that there should be a sidewalk and improvements to the driveways on Hutton Road. But as of right now, it would be a thousand foot long sidewalk to nowhere because it is the nearest sidewalk is three miles away. So we were asking for. That to be deferred until Hutton Road is improved. And then at that time, the church would improve the driveway and build the sidewalk in front of its driveway. That would also relates to condition number eight, that the current driveways that are. Asphalt as of right now, stay remain asphalt until Hut Route Road is improved, at which time they would be turned into concrete aprons.
Okay, is that it?
That is it.
Okay, any questions for the applicant? Not seeing any, so we'll go to the public. Anyone in the audience want to speak to this case in favor of or in opposition to? Please come forward. They saying no one, we'll go to Director Hand and get his comments and we'll address the requests that are being made.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Gunner Hand, Director of Planning and Design. Again, this is a preliminary development plan for the church expansion and parking lot. This is in the Prairie Delaware Piper area plan. Staff has received no letters of support, no letters in opposition, there are no notices of violation on the property. Staff does recommend approval with conditions, some of which were noted by the applicant earlier, but also include the removal of one of the two monument signs. And that they do have to come back for a final development plan before moving forward on the project. As it relates to the two issues in terms of the sidewalk. Well, let's start with the easier one with the driveway apron. Again, Hutton Road is not improved with like curbs and stuff road at this intersection. It's only asphalt, so. I think staff would be impetible to removing. Condition that we're in totality. There's a standard condition, I think, and let me just make sure that's not the standard condition. My alternative would be to have the standard condition that says it has to meet U G standard driveway. Driveway aprons, you said it was conditional brake?
Yeah, it's, yes.
Hold on a second.
That's the standard.
That's the standard.
And then Mr. Doyle informed us that it would need to be concrete from the road to the side. I can't hear you, Gunner.
That was the applicant notifying that they'd have to make it to concrete, so. All in the public right away. Oh, I understand why that is. Because it's not a residential, single family residence. Single family residences do allow basically asphalt to asphalt, not have that concrete, but because this is a. A larger use, let's just say, the the standard would, a suitable would be a standard commercial. If they wanted to defer that, that is something that I would have to address with the county engineer. In terms of sidewalks, again, it's in the Go Doc County Wide Mobility Strategy that sidewalks be created. Along all of Hutton Road. We understand that it's under proved. There's, this is just the policy of the U G. And yes, this would be any sidewalk to nowhere, but there are a lot of sidewalks to nowhere out there waiting to be connected one day. One parcel at a time. The uniqueness of this request, I would just add though, is. A lot of those types of sidewalks are on, let's say, commercial corridors and this segment of Hutton is predominantly residential, so. There's not a big development outside of the subdivision that's going to happen on Hutton that's going to build this sidewalk by itself. Most of these single family homeowners are just going to be single family owners for a long, long time unless the U G comes in. And improves Hutton Road on our own. And I don't see that happening based on the presentation we just had this earlier today at five o'clock anytime soon either, so. Staff feels strongly about the sidewalks. If you all wanted to remove that. I think that that is best addressed at the Board of Commissioner level. Because it's technically their standard or the county wide mobility strategy. I'm not. There's no real deviation for you all here. We've done this in the past where we've let it go through planning commission. And have it be decided by the Board of Commissioners with, at which case they often go with the applicant, but that doesn't mean you couldn't. Remove them. It would just put staff in a more of a predicament at the Board of Commissioners because then we would be asking to put it back in. So, but I defer to your guys' judgment on those two.
All right, thank you. Questions for Director Hand? I'm not seeing any, so I will stand for a motion when ready. Commissioner Ward, go ahead.
Okay, I I move to approve plan review application two zero two three dash zero one four. Let's go ahead and we want to defer, Gunner, he wants to defer or remove number eight, the driveway.
Staff would recommend that we keep all conditions as is. And I need, the only thing I can, I can't go against what the county engineer says, so that's his condition. I would need to refer to him between planning, either refer to him between planning commission and Board of Commissioners, or if you wanted to hold it over for us to have that conversation, we could do that too.
So you want us to move forward, approve it and then let that that process take out, take itself out with the with the with the Commissioners?
That would be staff's recommendation.
Okay, and we agree with that. Right, you go with that. Okay, yes. All right, that's fine. So, okay, so then we will not, we will not go ahead and and address number eight, number two at this time, just.
Your motion is just for approval as presented with staff stipulations and comments.
That's correct, sir.
All right, thank you. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Beth. Sorry, Commissioner Ernst, sorry. Any discussion on the motion for approval? Commissioner Conley? Nope, okay. Any discussion, anyone? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Isles?
Yes.
Ernst?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Muller?
Aye.
Straws?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Armstrong?
Aye.
Beth?
Aye.
Conley?
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, that motion to recommend approval of P R fourteen, subject to the conditions in the staff report passes ten in favor and none opposed.
This does go before the board?
Yes, that's correct.
That's what I thought. Okay, I got a little confused there. All right, we'll go before the board again on August thirty fourth, August thirty first at seven P M. I got thrown out by the plan or the plat before.
Our next application is plan review P R.
Gentlemen, sorry.
Oh, some problem. Twenty twenty three dash zero one nine Andrea Rand. Preliminary and final plan review for a self storage facility at fifty two hundred State Avenue. Please include the following items as part of the record for this case. The city's currently adopted zoning and subdivision regulations. The official zoning map for the area in question. The city's currently adopted master plan for the area in question. The staff report and attachments dated August fourteen, twenty twenty three. The application and other documents, plans, pictures and maps submitted by the applicant. In furtherance of the case and contained in the official file. The notices to property owners and the testimony at the Board of Zoning Appeals meeting earlier this evening. Does any member of the commission have any contact to disclose with regard to this application?
No.
Thank you.
Ms. Rand, I have two of you online, so would the real one, please raise your hand. There we go. Thank you. Okay, you're recued up, ready to speak? Your name and address, please.
Sure, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, thank you. My name is Andrea Rand and my address is seventy nine hundred International Drive Suite five fifty Minneapolis, Minnesota, five five four two five.
And go ahead and tell us about your project.
Okay, well, good evening, planning commissioners. Thank you so much for your time. Again, my name is Andrea Rand and I'm with I S G. We are the design firm representing U-Haul. And the development proposal before you tonight. So tonight we're presenting a preliminary development plan. And a final development plan for a new U-Box building on the site. As you can see in the site plan, the the this is an existing U-Haul site. And it's a seven and a half acre parcel. The development for the U-Box is a footprint. Of approximately thirteen thousand square feet, so it's a pretty small addition to a really large site. The site has been existing for a very long time, operating operating as a storage facility. And much of the site has been constructed well before any of the current zoning regulations are in place. And so the site does not meet many of the zoning regulations today. And by proposing this new U-Box building on the eastern side, we're actually bringing the site into a lot greater conformance and closer to meeting the zoning standards. Working as much as we can with the existing site constraints. And so right now there's an existing one story building in the center of the property that serves as like the customer service center and storage. Storage units, and then there's also some surrounding storage garages. And there are a lot of rental vehicles on site. The proposed U-Box building is going to be on the eastern portion of the property. Where it is currently parking lot today, so it's not replacing any existing green space. And the U-Box building is, I don't know if you're familiar with the U-Box storage concept. It is where you take a U-Box like storage pod and then they deliver it to a customer site. The customer will then fill it. And then U-Box will pick, U U-Haul will pick up the storage boxes. And then bring them back to the U-Box facility where they will store it for the customer until the customer is ready for that storage box to be delivered on site. So this new U-Box building is going to be accessed only by employees of the U-Haul site. It is not a customer. Access building, so there's no additional traffic to the site for for any customers. And so there's not going to be any additional parking needs for this building. And so that's operationally how that works. And then I'm going to describe the site to you a little bit more. The U-Box building is a one story building and the loading dock is on the front of the building. And that is because it's the only point of entrance into the building. It's just a loading dock with a service door for the employees to get in and out of. And with the existing site constraints, we needed that to be on the front of the building because it's kind of our entrance to the building. And with truck access, it only works to be on the front of the building with the site limitations. And by doing that, you actually have the building that acts as a buffer between the loading area and then the residential to the backs of the. That is behind this building. To meet the design standards, we had worked with staff prior to submitting this application. And they gave us the okay that by creating a screen wall in front of the loading dock area that was architecturally. Compatible with the building that that would meet the intent of the design code by not having. The design code does not want the loading dock in the front of the building, but by having a screen wall, they felt that that would meet the intent by hiding it and it with the screen wall would blend in with the building. And so that's programmatically how the building functions, but why the screen wall is in front and. How we worked through staff with the site constraints to kind of meet that requirement. You'll see that in our request, we have sixteen design deviations from the code. And I guess from the design guidelines, I should say. And even though that seems like a really big number, I would say fourteen of those sixteen design requirement deviations, we are. Meeting it to like a ninety percent capacity, so. One example is building has to be three hundred and sixty degree architecture. For, you know, one requirement is window glazing, another might be building materials, another might be. Building height variations, the refined variations, and we have met that on the western facade that is visible from the street. We are meeting on the southern facade, which is visible from the street and we are meeting on. On part of the eastern facade, which is visible. What is unique about this site is the U-Box is tucked into a hill that is fairly steep. And it, I don't, oh, I should, it's, I don't know, I forget, sorry, it's somewhere in the report. But basically the top of the building is equal to the bottom of the residential properties about fifty feet back. And so much of this building will not be visible at all to the adjacent neighborhood because. First of all, the hill and the topography is going to hide most of that building. And just to clarify, there is no rooftop equipment on top of this building, so there's nothing visually to see and nothing to hear and then. Adjacent residential properties. But when we're asking for these deviations, it's, you know, I've said we've met three sides of this building, but. A portion of the backside, we don't think it is necessary to have window glazing and additional architectural features because it is tucked into that hillside and not visible. And then another example of the deviations is some of the, I would say pedestrian connections internally to the site. We are not doing many changes to the rest of the site in terms of circulation for vehicular uses and pedestrians, but we are enhancing that. We are adding. Landscape islands at the entry points at the ends of all the parking areas. And we're going to be adding pedestrian hatch crosswalk area. But if you look at it, the design guidelines, it says we have to have elements like a raised crosswalk area and. Handrails and that just doesn't fit in with the existing grades and the existing site programmatically, but we are. Meeting and bringing it so much more into conformance of the site. And so we are creating street landscaping. Right now there is no soft barrier in the front edge of the street, and so we're adding sod. We're going to be doing. Full street trees to co compliance and also adding shrubs the whole distance of the property as well. And so I would say, big picture wise, we are really bringing the site up to a lot of conformance. Those code deviations are. Almost to conformance, they're just in certain areas, not a full compliance. I will maybe just stop there and say that we've read through the staff report, we agree with the conditions and we would be available to answer any questions. Thank you so much for your time and consideration.
Thank you. Any questions from commission members? Seeing none, we'll go to the audience. Anyone in the audience want to speak to this case? Raise your hand or come to the microphone. He's saying none, we'll go to Director Hand and get his comments and would you specifically discuss the deviations requested?
Yes, Mr. Chair, Gunner Hand, Director of Planning and Design. Again, this case is being heard in conjunction with. Boza twenty twenty three zero two three, which were approved earlier this evening by the Board of Zoning Appeals. Again, this is a preliminary and final development plan for the self storage expansion. This is in the citywide comp plan and midtown neighborhood. Staff received no letters of support, no letters in opposition. Again, there's some old notices of violation on this property for maintenance and a couple of police calls as noted in the horizontal fields hearing. Staff does recommend approval with the with conditions, including the commercial design guidelines. We've been working on this with U-Haul for years to get it to this point. It started in the Rock Richardson area by pre the previous. The previous director of planning and into current staff. What I will say is we've been working with the applicant to get them to remove or negate any deviation as many as possible as we typically do. They have worked with us as noted by the applicant to get close. There's been plenty of instances where staff in this body has agreed they've gotten close enough on some of the materiality, specifically deviations. I believe with all of the deviations requested, again, I defer to the wisdom of the planning commission. Staff has two primary issues still. One is the pedestrian access noted. We do believe pedestrian access should be provided to the new structure. In addition to the pedestrian access, they are adding to the primary structure that doesn't exist today. So that's a correction. I guess there's a lot of corrections happening across this site, which is good. And then secondly. Although we've done quite a bit to add some screening against State Avenue. Staff still believes the building should be rotated and those loading docks should be facing inward. If you look at all the other loading docks and storage units and others on the site. None of them face state and this one would. So we don't think that's in conformance with the site plan or else that could potentially lead to. Issues with site circulation and parking. But you know how I I think staff feels about parking at parking, required parking in these types of uses. We do, there's a design solution, so those are the two that staff still has to hang up on.
That all?
Yeah.
All right. Questions for Director Hand? Okay, seeing none, I will stand for a motion when ready. Okay, seeing none, I will stand for a motion when ready.
And Mr. Chair, just point of clarification, those deviations need to be in the motion, depending on how you want to move forward as a board.
All right. Who's got one? Commissioner Jones?
I have a question first, are the deviations are related to commercial design guidelines and the pedestrian access?
Uh, I'm sorry, Commissioner Jones, what was, what was the question?
The deviations are related to the commercial design guidelines and the pedestrian access and then uh, the dock?
Um, so the two deviations, staff think we could still do better on is orientation in the building. So rotating it ninety degrees clockwise so that the loading docks face west. Um, and then providing pedestrian access to the new structure. And again, I think there's two ways to handle this, if you agree with staff's two remaining issues with the deviations, we could hold this over again. Or we could hold this over uh, and work through a redesign because this is a preliminary and final development plan. While it sounds like a lot, um. And there might be some shaking out of the site circulation as previously noted, we could also deal with this at building uh, permits if you wanted. Staff believes you could still deal with this at building permits, but if you want us to work it out and come back, uh, again, we defer to your wisdom.
What's, what's more appropriate, I mean, moving the building ninety degrees is a lot.
I think what's more appropriate is to hold it over if you want them to redesign with that direction.
If we choose to go that way.
If you choose to go that way.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Straws?
Yeah, I think this is another one where I know they, they have been working for a long time to get to where they are. But this is another one with so many deviations and so much that the staff and the petitioner hasn't come to agreement on. It puts us in a really weird position to make a bunch of motions and deviations and approvals. Um, you know, I know that hard work has gone into this, but it really puts us into a position where I like, I, it's just tough to make a motion on something with so many deviations. And then to say, to hold it over, if we hold it over, can we come back with less deviations potentially? Uh, and I think that's the, that, that's kind of where my question is, is it, it makes it really tough on us to, to, to move on something like this, in my opinion, I don't want to speak for the entire commission.
Okay. You want to respond or anything, or?
So, uh, Gunnar Hand, Director of Planning and Urban Design, what I would say is if you agree with staff that there's still issues with building orientation and pedestrian access, I think we're at a point where we need the Planning Commission's direction on how to handle that with the applicant, and that would help us with a redesign and the time needed to do that redesign. The other deviations, again, they sound like a lot, but most of them are regards to materiality where we think we've gotten close enough. And that's less of an issue for us, but, but again, I think it depends on which deviations are of main concern, if you agree with staff, I think we need your direction to the applicant so we can finish.
Before, before, I, I'm sorry, and since you're responding to me, I'll respond back to the building orientation and the dock situation because of my trucking background and because of the knowledge of this site. Putting the dock in the back and doing some kind of jackknife to unload these pods would be extremely tough logistically for an eighteen-wheeler that's going to be carrying these pods. So I think that's probably why they have the dock oriented the way it is because from my design and from the hill and going beside the building and jackknifing and the parking of the rental, I think that's why it's designed the way it is, is that's just my, my background, so I kind of probably understand why they do have it designed the way they do. But again, I can't, you know, speak for everybody, but I, I, I get it logistically why it's designed the way it is.
All right, Commissioner, with your, sorry, Mr. Chair, with your expertise, again, I think staff's recommendation would be to have the loading docks facing west, not the rear. So would you think that you would have the same issues if it was facing the parking lot?
Potentially, and, and again, you know, potentially, I, I guess facing the west, you're going to see.
And I'll go, I'll go to a site plan.
Yeah, yeah, let's do that real quick.
I just don't like the idea of us redesigning a plan here at a commission meeting at nine thirty-five P M. These, these deviations sometimes get so complicated without seeing anything in writing before us, it's like, you know, Mr. Paul, Paul Sinelli, when he comes and has fourteen deviations without seeing them in a, in sort of a spreadsheet or some manner, I, I'm never comfortable redesigning somebody's project on the fly.
Agreed.
Heard the case in the last fifteen minutes. And I, I've got Commissioner Ernst and then Commissioner Connolly on my speaking list.
And I, I'll defer to them so they can speak and I'll look at this, Gunnar, so, yeah.
Yeah, I'm going to go on with Mr. Ernst.
I simply tried to try and amend a while ago to agree with Mr. Straws completely that this was a mess. And when we're all said and done, I'd be more than happy to make a motion to hold it over so that staff and uh, the applicant can work things out because I don't feel qualified. Uh, not nearly as qualified as Commissioner Straws to design how this should be.
Thank you, Commissioner Ernst, my sentiments, Commissioner Connolly, did that, were you going to say the same thing or something similar?
Correct.
All right, thank you. Okay, any further discussion, are we ready for a motion? Commissioner Ernst?
I would make a motion to hold this over for thirty days so that staff and the applicant can work out the details appropriately.
Thank you, motion is for a holdover for thirty days for staff and the applicant to get together, come back with another proposal that to, to, is not quite as complicated and more agreeable. Now, is that a second, Commissioner Connolly?
That's the second.
Thank you. Any discussion on that motion for holdover? Seeing none, roll call please.
Isles?
Hi.
Ernst?
Hi.
Jones?
Hi.
Miller?
Hi.
Muller?
Hi.
Straws?
Hi.
Ward?
Hi.
Armstrong?
Hi.
Beth?
Hi.
Conley?
Hi.
Mr. Chairman, that motion to hold over P R nineteen until the September eleventh meeting for the applicant, for discussion, further discussion between the staff and the applicant on the design of this project passes ten in favor and none opposed.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman, our last application on the agenda is Plan Review P R twenty twenty-three dash zero two one, Nicole Curry with B R R Architecture. Final Plan Review to Approve Building Elevation Revisions to the Previously Approved Hudson Apartments at thirty-six hundred Rainbow Boulevard. Please include the following items as part of the record for this case. The city's currently adopted zoning and subdivision regulations, the official zoning map for the area in question, the city's currently adopted master plan for the area in question, the staff report and attachments dated August fourteen, twenty twenty-three, the application and other documents, plans, pictures and maps submitted by the applicant in furtherance of the case and contained in the official file and the notices to property owners. Does any member of the commission have any contact to disclose on this application?
No.
Thank you.
Hey, Ms. Curry? Welcome, thanks for your patience.
Thank you, guys, uh, Nicole Curry, B R R Architecture, eighty-one thirty-one Metcalf Suite three hundred, Overland Park, Kansas, uh, six six two zero four. We are requesting a thirty-day continuance on this while we further evaluate staff's comments.
Okay. Thank you, any questions for the applicant?
No.
All right, I feel somewhat bad that you waited all evening long to ask for that. Okay, so any questions for the applicant? Seeing none, uh, we will go to the audience, if there any, was anyone here to speak to this case, uh, please come forward or raise your hand. Seeing none of that, Commissioner Hand, are you okay with the thirty-day holdover? Okay, I will stand for a motion. Commissioner Jones?
Motion to approve the applicant's request for a thirty-day holdover.
Thank you, motion for holdover made by Commissioner Jones and seconded by Commissioner Armstrong, is that correct?
Yes.
Thank you, any discussion? Seeing none, roll call please.
Isles?
Hi.
Ernst?
Hi.
Jones?
Hi.
Miller?
Hi.
Muller?
Hi.
Straws?
Hi.
Ward?
Hi.
Armstrong?
Hi.
Beth?
Hi.
Conley?
Hi.
Mr. Chairman, that motion to hold over this application for thirty days until the September eleventh meeting as requested by the applicant passes ten in favor and none opposed.
Thank you, and does that conclude our agenda, Janet?
Yes, sir, it does.
Great, thank you, does anybody have anything before we conclude? Seeing none, you guys have a great, what's left of the evening and we'll see you next month.
Thank you all.